Are we ready CJ?
Hey, I'll call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian City Council for Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. It's 6:01 and we will start with roll call, please.
Thank you Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Byrd.
Here.
Councilmember Mylum is absent. Also Mayor DeVere is absent.
Thank you. Now if everybody to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community invocation by Mr. Woodard from Ten Mile Christian Church. It's nice to see you again Larry.
Almost changed my prayer after I read in the paper about that escaped convict from Caldwell that killed two of our citizens. You know, when are they gonna get to jail? That had nothing to do with my prayer tonight. That was just, that was a freebie.
Our dear heavenly Father, again we take up significant city business and we pause to thank God for the many blessings we enjoy in Meridian. We thank you for our mayor and this council who give much of their time ensuring that Meridian is a safe and enjoyable city in which to live. The fact that we are one of the fastest growing cities in the nation is a reflection of all the good things this council has done. Tonight as we bow our heads to you, we are well aware of other cities which have problems well beyond ours. Sonoma which was ravaged by wildfire, Houston which experienced record flooding, San Juan, Puerto Rico which was flattened by a hurricane. We pray tonight for these cities. Our nation, state, and this city is facing a growing challenge of illegal drugs. With these drugs, other crimes seem to manifest and we ask that you protect our men and women in blue who work daily to keep us safe from this epidemic. Elections are coming up within a few weeks and we pray for those who are elected by our citizens to lead this city during the next few years. May they be the best leaders possible. Our youth remain a concern for us as they prepare for adulthood. Help our teachers and administrators as they mold them to be good citizens in the future. May we as citizens look ahead and provide the buildings and facilities to house our youth during their school times. Tonight as I close, I pray for the 133 new people who will be making this city their home before the next city council meeting. May they find friendly people, good schools, safe roads, houses of worship, and this council ready to help in their transition. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Larry. Item number four, the adoption agenda, Mr. Borton.
Mr. President, on item six, Y, we will be adding onto the agenda, the consent agenda, a PO approval for PO number 18-0088 to Advanced Systems Group. On item eight B, it's proposed ordinance 17-1752. And with those changes, I would move that we adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have anybody?
We did Mr. President. We had two sign up under a topic discussion of process Denise Hansen, I apologize, I can't read the last name after Hansen, and Nicholas Gephardt.
Say, I'm Denise Hansen LaFever. I'm at 6706 North Salvia Way, Meridian Idaho. And what I wanted to talk about real quick today is I've had the opportunity to set through planning and zoning meetings for months now and come to city council meetings and I'm really enjoying learning the process and I've had an opportunity to talk to Brian, Bill, Caleb, and Joshua. They're absolutely wonderful staff. And I've gone to coffees and other things and this is a very open community and very approachable and very enjoyable. So what I'm gonna say is not, is just an enhancement on what everybody's already doing. And I'm very pleased that I've also gone to neighborhood meetings and I've also gone to homeowners meetings and it's really clear that not everybody in the community understands the process. And when I made a comment to that, to Caleb, voila, here was, here was a memo you guys are working on and it's very commendable. And they want one step further to go back through and say, hey, take a look at it and edit it. Very, very great planning and zoning staff you guys have here. So what I wanted to talk about was I would really like to see basically the city really embrace social media to some more fuller extents and using Nextdoor, Facebook, emails. I think that would really help with the community and especially in the process if it starts at the neighborhood meeting announcements and goes forward. It's, it's very difficult to set through these meetings and have, see nobody shows up at the neighborhood meetings and then the wind gets out that there's something going on and then the developer spent money on something and it, and they have these people in a room. So I think a lot of that could be fixed with using social media. I think that Planning and Zoning has got that in their hopper. I'm just throwing it out there. In addition to that, when I talked to Brian, he also said that they were working on the GIS interactive map. That is something I would like to see resources spent on as far as getting that map up. Of course with resources and technology, I know it's very expensive, but it'd be really great if those maps would go back through and have parcel accounts, acres, site addresses, subdivision names, school names, flood districts, highway, urban renewal sections in them, links to the flood maps, links to the highway district, owner name, tax information, current zoning, future zoning, county or city, which, which area they're in, if they're incorporated or not incorporated into the city of Meridian, planning and zoning documents, if they could be tied to that. So you could have one spot that you could see the applications, the designs, the elevations, the deeds, the deeds, liens on the properties, building permits and fire stations. And I know you guys are all working on stuff like that. It would be really exciting to see the city really embrace that technology if possible. So, once again, it's a commendable job Planning and Zoning is doing here. Very enjoyable to talk to.
Any questions? Thank you very much for your view. Appreciate it.
We also had Nicholas Gephardt sign up as well.
Now on the record.
Come on up.
Make a speech.
Thank you. Is that all? Item number six, consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as published with the inclusion of item Y. That's the approval of PO 18-0088 and for the president to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the amended consent agenda. Mr. Borton, would you call roll?
Thank you Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Okay, we had nothing moved from the consent agenda, so we're going to community items. Item A is community health presentation by Blue Cross and I think the young lady's here to do it.
Thank you Council President and Council Members. My name is Kendra Witt Doyle. I'm the executive director of the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation which is located at 3,000 East Pine Avenue here in Meridian. I'm here today to give a presentation that I gave at the Association of Idaho Cities Conference. Mayor Tammy attended this presentation along with council member Little Roberts and after I gave the presentation, Mayor Tammy asked me if I would ever be willing to come in and present this to the council members here in Meridian and I said gladly, definitely. So we set a date and I'm here to give you, I'll try to make it as brief as possible. I run a topic called Healthy People, Healthy Economies. This is a topic that has fascinated me for quite a while. So a little bit about the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation. We're actually a separate entity from Blue Cross. We're a private nonprofit foundation that was set up by Blue Cross in 2002 really with the mission to build a healthier Idaho. And we do that through engagement, partnership, and creating transformational solutions that can impact health here in Idaho. So we are a statewide foundation working across the state. We really work from the motto of that we're transformational, not transactional. So we're not just a check writer. We're really looking for solutions that can impact health in a sustainable capacity moving forward. So with that being said, something, I'm a public health person by trade and something that I find really, really fascinating is the causes of death, of comparing those in 1900 to today. Really it was around 2010, we can call it today. Back in 1900, what human beings died of was really infectious diseases. These are things such as pneumonia, influenza, tuberculosis. Today we've seen a shift to chronic diseases. Things such as heart disease and cancer that are largely preventable. Something that I find really fascinating again is back in the early 1900s, the control of infectious disease can really be largely contributed to three things. It kinda happened symbiotically at the same time. There was vaccinations, antimicrobial medicines started to come out, and they also started to improve sanitation and hygiene. And at that time, cities played a very significant role in improving health and really reversing this trend. Insuage disposal, water treatment, solid waste. So at that time, cities played a very vital role in public health. Cities still play a very vital role in public health today and I'm gonna really start to make that case and present some, some information for you. So when I think about today's health system and health in a whole, I think of an analogy that I call the stream analogy. So we have a stream and one day villagers see babies floating down the stream. They're struggling, they're trying to get out, but what do the villagers do? They jump in and they start scooping out the babies. They even put up a net to catch these babies, right? Make it easier to scoop them out. But several villagers stopped and wondered, what's causing the babies to fall in in the first place? So several of them went upstream and what'd they find? They found a monster throwing in the babies. The villagers said, let's go conquer that monster and stop the babies from falling in. They still kept the net, but they said, we also have to go stop this monster to stop the babies constantly falling in. So villagers went upstream and they scared the monster, killed the monster, however we wanna refer to it. And I love this analogy because health is an outcome and we don't talk enough about what creates or causes health. What are those upstream issues that are causing people to fall into the river? We're doing a great job of scooping people out. We're spending a lot of money scooping people out of the river. We're not spending tons of money looking at the upstream issues of what's causing them to actually fall in in the first place. So another analogy that we really use to drive our work at the foundation is what I call the cliff analogy or the cliff of good health. I did not invent this. A very smart person at the Center for Disease Control and Prevention actually created this analogy, but it really relates to health of that we have someone going along and we have a negative health event. We fall off the cliff and we hit the bottom. Well, what is the, what's today's solution? Is we frequently put an ambulance at the bottom of the cliff to pick people up and take them to the doctor or the hospital system. One solution too is that we put up safety nets of where we try to catch people before they ever hit the bottom or even safety nets that can act as trampolines where we try to bounce people back up to the top of the cliff, right? The issue with that is people can yo-yo. They can come up, they can fall down, they can go up, they can fall down. We could put a fence up to prevent people from ever falling off in the first place. This is primary prevention. The tendency with that is people can still butt up, right up against that fence. So the goal is to try to back them up as far as possible. And this is really where we drive our work under the foundation is trying to back people up as far as possible from that fence. The issue is not all communities are the same. You're gonna hear me talk about in just a few slides here that our zip code predicts our health more than our genetic code. Where we live greatly impacts our health and that's due to differences in exposures and opportunities. Can be differences in care. There's a variety of things that can contribute to this. So what makes us healthy? Actually only 10% is related to access to care, yet we're spending 88% of our funds on the actual medical services. 20% is genetics, 20% is environment, and 50% is healthy behaviors. I wanna put a word of caution there. Healthy behaviors and environment are really interconnected. The two are so interconnected. If you don't have the options to go be healthy and your environment doesn't support that, that healthy behavior is gonna be very, very hard to embrace. So if all you have is fast food restaurants in your community, it's gonna be very hard to choose healthier options if you're choosing to eat out. So how your environment is structured and the options that it gives you impacts your healthy behaviors and the lifestyles that you choose. So a tagline that I say over and over and it's probably my sounding board is that health doesn't happen in a doctor's office. The doctor's office is the end outcome. Health starts where we live, learn, work, and play. And that's something that we really, really focus on at the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation. Because our zip code predicts our health more than our genetic code. I'm gonna show you some data here that I think is really startling and I've even pulled some Idaho statistics around this. I didn't wanna just pick on Idaho. So this is Kansas City, Missouri. These are zip codes in Kansas City. You can see the pink there, the life expectancy is 70 to 72 years and then we have some dark blue up above where the life expectancy is 80 to 83. You can see trends similar to this across all of the United States of where different zip codes have different health outcomes, different life expectancies. We're not unique. And this is because when we think of health, it's really an ecosystem of where income, education, community infrastructure, and health are all interconnected. And we have to brace that interconnectedness to ever improve health in our state and as a country. So here's a great one. Lower income individuals are at a higher risk of having diabetes. This is actually West Virginia's data, but I'm sure we find something very similar here in Idaho. So we've actually recently purchased a platform at Blue Cross of Idaho called the Community Health Management Hub that takes our claims data and it starts to drill it down and overlap it with some of these community things like education, like income. If the video plays, I'll show you. If it doesn't, we'll, we'll let it go. So I'll blow it up here and I'll show you the video around this new platform that we've purchased. I don't know if we have volume. Do we? If we don't CJ, I'll skip it.
...compels us, but it doesn't tell the whole story of who we are. Behind every vibrant, vital strand, there's a force even more powerful, our environment. Because while our community can't curb our cravings, it can craft our choices. It can't reconfigure our bones, but it can shape our bodies. It can't change our eye color, but it can change our vision. When it comes to our health and well-being, zip code is more important than genetic code. And today, we are introducing a new platform that harnesses the role of community in informing our health like never before. Giving us the ability to not only look at who people are, but where their issues live. Introducing the Community Health Management Hub brought to you by Blue Cross Blue Shield. The name that grew from a grassroots level into one of national reach, today touching every corner of the country. This revolutionary new approach is unearthing problems, revealing solutions, and bridging the gap between the two, down to the zip code. By integrating research from a wealth of sources ranging from transportation and nutritional data to crime statistics and linguistics, everyone from physicians and public health officials to policymakers and thought leaders will now be able to shine a light on behavioral trends and environmental patterns in incredible local detail. By solving problems rather than just identifying them, health leaders can turn data into real, sustainable solutions. Like how for some people with diabetes, the first step toward taking their medication is having the transportation to get it or identifying that perhaps it's not the will to eat better that's scarce, but the grocery stores. Even learning that while a community might not have access to fancy gyms, it can flourish with simple sidewalks. It's time to shift our focus away from the clinic and into the community. Because with the backing of a company that lives in every single neighborhood in America, one approach can benefit both those in acting change as well as those affected by it. Come with us to complete the missing link and see what the world will look like when we go deeper together.
So this is new. We've just been starting to play around with this platform, but is what I did do is I very, I polled Idaho data specifically around hypertension. So I took hypertension and started looking at it across the zip codes. So I randomly polled some, some cities across Idaho. So we have Ketchum. Now granted, this is just Blue Cross of Idaho claims data at this point, so it's Medicare and Blue Cross Idaho claims. 2.53% hypertension in Ketchum, income per capita close to 49,000. All the way down to Elk City, we have close to 13% with hypertension and an income per capita around 16,000. So we're seeing again very similar trends here in Idaho that we're seeing nationwide. And again, I, I talk about this all the time. It's really this ecosystem that income, education, and community infrastructure are all tied to health. So something that really fascinates me is if we create healthy people, how does that drive healthy economies? And this has been a discussion and there's a lot of anecdotal evidence that the two are interconnected. And the research is really starting to come out driving healthy people and healthy economies and how the two are interconnected. So again, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Association actually put together a report called Healthy People, Healthy Economies. And what they did is they took claims data from across the entire country and they put it into a really fancy equation to get a health index code or score. And is what they really found is that as health increases, income per capita increases. As health status increases, so does average annual pay. As health increases, unemployment drops. As health increases, the GDP per capita increases. So this is one of the first reports really starting to link the two of how economies and health are interconnected. And it's a really wonky statistic full of data report, but really the conclusion is that healthier areas tend to have faster job growth, population growth, and income growth compared, compared with areas with similar demographics within the same state. So that's similar demographics. They're not taking a lower income neighborhood and comparing it to a higher income neighborhood. So what I really talked about at Association of Idaho Cities is the role of cities. They played a role in the early 1900s in public health and they play a very vital role today in improving health. Because health doesn't happen in a doctor's office. It starts in our communities. And elected officials have the capability to be part of the solution. This can occur through your comp plans, your urban design plans. There are so many things of creating access to safe routes to school, to building the infrastructure that really creates that healthy community and the data is really starting to pop up. And as we start to build this healthy community, it also drives a healthier economy. Again, that data's very new, but that's starting to be what it's pointing to. And that was the presentation that I was asked to repeat here. I can stand for questions if, if we have time, President.
Yep, we do. Any questions councilman? Any remarks, statements?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Kendra, thanks for the presentation. You're somewhat of a subject matter expert on some of this stuff, so what are, what are recommendations that you would make to the city of Meridian? What are the things that we need to be looking at doing differently? What are the things that we need to be continuing to do that are great? If you had a magic wand, what are the things you'd love to see implemented?
Oh gosh. Councilmember Cavanagh, that's a loaded question. I think, you know, it depends. I am not a one-size, community fits all. We do go in and work with a lot of communities. We really sit down and look at what are the assets of that community, what can you build on within that community? And then where do you have opportunities? Where are some of those gaps that you could fill in? You know, I really don't, I, I don't have a clear-cut answer until I dive into your comprehensive plan a little bit deeper and see where you're doing well and maybe where there are some gaps that could get filled in.
Fair enough.
But walkable communities are a great place to start.
Any other?
Mr. President, Kendra.
Little Roberts.
I would just like to say thank you. I mean, it feels like you shortened it down a little bit for us.
I tried to get through for you guys. I know you have a whole agenda.
But thank you very much. That was wonderful. I think it's something that we really need to pay attention to and it's nice to, to have the numbers to go with it. So thank you for all that you're doing and all that Blue Cross does.
Yeah, thank you Councilmember Little Roberts. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council, Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Johnson. We got, oh, we're getting triple played here.
Yeah, we bring everybody to overload ya. Councilman, my name's Blaine Johnston. I'm president of Historic Preservation Commission. I reside at 6138 North Mill here in Meridian. Thanks for this opportunity to come forward this evening. Two things to talk about today. First of all regarding the ordinance that's before you. When I first joined the commission, our meetings ran for about an hour and then were over. Over the past few years, our meetings have grown to hour and a half, two hours, and sometimes longer than that. So we're asking for a change in time so that we can start at an earlier time so that our commission members can get home in a decent hour. So that's the first thing. Secondly, talk to you, if Hillary's ready. Most of you know we have our Tour Buddy app for smartphones. And with that, we are rolling out a tour coin. So that as you go through the tour and look at part of this, so this is the E F on House and you read through this, at the bottom, you're gonna be asked a question. And as you go through and you answer all these questions, at the end, uh-oh, got it wrong. So we can try it again. Well, you'll get a sticker. So our hope is that as people go through the tour and they answer the questions, then we know who that is and we're going to award each of those people a coin. Ms. Jones is gonna present each of you with that coin right now. Ms. Jones is going to present each of you with that coin right now.
Thank you, J.C.
For real?
So with that, I'll stand for questions, or I don't know if you can vote on that ordinance now, or if you want to put it on your consent agenda.
We can certainly go through the, some questions and stuff, and then I think we can also, Bill, if I'm right, we can pass the ordinance too.
Mr. President, yes, you can.
Because it is listed on the agenda. You got any questions for the people?
Mr. President.
We got, we got to make and talk and do something.
Not a question, just a comment. This walking tour, I know is a project that J.C.'s been working on for a number of years. I remember when it was in its infancy, some four, five, six years ago, and it exceeded all the expectations. This is really truly remarkable. I never thought in a million years that we would have an app that's this interactive and a coin. What an incentive for people to want to engage in this tour. So a job well done. Thank you for sharing that with us, and thank you for the coin tonight. That's very kind.
If you look at your coins, we ordered 300 coins. The first 300 are numbered, so you have a numbered coin.
Oh, wow.
It's on the edge.
Interesting. Fifteen.
And we'll go through, and we haven't made the decision yet if the next 300, if we're going to number them, or if we're just going to limit the first 300 to the numbered set.
They want it, they need to get to work.
Correct.
All right.
That's all I have right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate what you do for us. CJ, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Clerk, reading ordinance 17.
Mr. President.
Dash, oh, yes.
Before you do that, I wanted to make one more comment. I don't think I heard Mr. Johnson say, this is not just a time change, it's a day change as well. Currently, the Historic Preservation Commission meets right after the Arts Commission, and sometimes their meetings have run long, and so then again, it extends the evening. So this is a different day. It's the fourth Thursday instead of the second Thursday, as well as the earlier time. And he may have said it, and I missed it, but I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Thank you very much. You would read the ordinance by title only?
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Meridian, Ordinance Number 17-1752, and Ordinance Amending Title II, Chapter Three, Section Five, Meridian City Code, Regarding Meeting Days and Times of the Historic Preservation Commission, Providing for a Waiver of the Reading Rules and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, you've heard that by title only. Is there anybody who would like to hear the ordinance in its entirety? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
And Little Roberts.
I move that we accept proposal, proposed 17-1752.
Second?
Suspension of rules.
Suspension of rules.
Second.
Okay, we've got the motion at second. Mr. Clerk, would you call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into action items. Item A is the final plat for Brainbridge S subdivision, and it has been requested to continue to November 8. Council, and without objection, if you have no objections, I would entertain a motion to continue this.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we continue item H 2017-0133 to November 8, 2017.
Second?
Motion is second, to continue this to November 8, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries. Item B has also been the applicant request continuance of H 2017-0135 till November 8, 2017. Council, without any objection, I would entertain a motion to continue this.
Mr. President. Move that we continue item H 2017-0135 to November 8, 2017.
Second?
You've got a motion second to continue H 2017-0135 to November 8, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, public hearing, H 2017-0114, by Premier Investments. I will open the public hearing, and Josh, or Bill, I haven't seen you for a day or two.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I am filling in for Ms. Allen this evening, so bear with me. So the first item on the agenda for you to take into consideration, or the third item, I should say, is the Aegean subdivision. Before I get into my presentation, I would like to make a clarification for council that the item as noted on the agenda does not accurately reflect the correct zoning acreage that's before you, that I'm going to share with you in my presentation. But I believe with my public presentation that I share with you tonight, it should clarify that error. So I wanted to go on record to let you know that the, with the Aegean subdivision, the R4 portion is actually, on the agenda, it's noted as 25.79 acres. It's actually being annexed with 28.81 acres, and the R8 portion is actually 36.5 acres, and noted on the agenda, it says 3.7 acres. So there was a staff error on that, so I just wanted to go on record and make that clarification for the folks in the audience and those watching at home, and for you as well as you take this under consideration this evening.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. So this application before you is for annexation and Plumerney plat. The site consists of 6.27 acres of land, is currently zoned RUT in Ada County, and is located on the east side of North McDermott Road and a quarter mile south of West McDermott Road here, as you can see here. So the property is just directly south of the Oaks South subdivision that was approved back in 2013. The applicant requests annexation of approximately 65.31 acres of land, again with R4 and R8 zoning districts. The R8 will approximately encompass 28.8 acres of land, and the R8 zone will be 36.5 acres of land. And the future land use map, or future land use designation on this property is medium-density residential. So the two requested zoning designations do comply with the medium-density standards in the comprehensive plan. Again, we anticipate densities between three and eight dwelling units to the acre. The Plumerney plat that is before you consists of 215 single-family residential lots for a gross density of 3.43 acres of land. So again, it's, or 3.43 dwelling units to the acre. So that is on the lower side of that density range, but it does fall within the stated parameters, as I just alluded to you. A DA is recommended as a pre, as a provision of annexation, and those DA provisions are included in Exhibit B of the staff report. So we have one, the Plumerney plat again consists of 215 single-family residential lots. Minimum property size can range from 56.03 square feet up to 8,355 square feet, and the subdivision is proposed to develop in five phases. One access is proposed from McMillan Road, which, excuse me, McDermott Road, which is just south of the Oaks development. And then when the Oaks South development came in, there was actually a stub street along in the northeast corner of the development that will also be extended with this subdivision. The Five Mile Creek runs along the north boundary here. That was enhanced, at least a portion of it was improved with the Oaks South development, and has the multi-use pathway on that site. But because the site does abut the Five Mile Creek, some of this property is located within the floodplain, so that will have to be addressed at final plat and meet our floodplain administrative, or floodplain ordinance as well. A 25-foot-wide landscape buffer is required along McDermott Road. However, the applicant is proposing a 50-foot-wide landscape buffer, and the majority of that reason is because at some future date, ITT anticipates expanding future highway State 16, which is just to the west of this property. So the applicant wants to make sure that there's adequate landscape buffer there and buring to screen those single-family homes up against that, that right, future right-of-way or future highway. So they've gone above and beyond what the code requires. The applicant is also proposing 7.6 acre, or 7.06 acres of common open space, which is in excess of the UDC, which typically would require 62, 6.27 acres. The proposed amenities for the development consist of internal pathways, a playground with children's play equipment, picnic shelter, and a gazebo in accordance with UDC standards. The applicant also provided you with sample elevations this evening for your consideration. There is a mix of building materials and stone and stucco veneer accents. And these are things that are being addressed, tied to in the, in the proposed development agreements. I did have a question this evening before the meeting started, and it looks like this is a, BRT did provide comments on this application, and they are requesting that the applicant coordinate with them with a future transit stop. So I did something unique for the city of Meridian, so I did want to pass that information along to you as well as you take this under consideration this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this project at their hearing. Testifying in favor was Becky McKay, the applicant's representative. Commenting on the applicant, application was Jacob Housard, Valley Regional Transit, Mike Weaver, and Janice Christensen. They also provided written testimony on the application, and then Becky McKay provided written testimony as well on the application. So key items of public testimony at the hearing, Mr. Weaver had stated that he would like single-family homes up against his boundary, and this is Mr. Weaver's property here, right, located adjacent to the southwest corner, and he wanted homes to be single-family along this boundary of his property. And then also, there was a desire, because of the Five Mile Creek is kind of a repairing area or a nice natural creek, that that remain natural and maintained for a green belt and be improved as a water amenity. So key items of the commission discussed, again, more open space, so something that's transpired or changed from P&amp;Z until the, and what's currently in front of you this evening. P&amp;Z, originally at P&amp;Z, this location, the northeast corner of the development, there were actually two common lots, or two buildable lots that were part of this common open space. Commission felt that that didn't look appropriate. They wanted to see a little more open space for this proposed development. So the applicant went back and provided you a revised plat this evening where they removed the building, buildable lots, and increased the open space per commission's recommendation. So I wanted to pass that along to you as well. The other thing that was brought up was transitional lot sizes. Again, that was one of the concerns Mr. Weaver brought up, and the commission took that at part of their deliberations as well as, was, is this the appropriate lot sizes up against five-acre pieces of property in Ada County? Again, the only change by, the P&amp;Z commission was the loss of those two lots. Now keep in mind that the applicant was to keep, allowed to keep their overall total of 215 lots. But again, it was the intent of the Planning and Zoning Commission to increase the open space for this development, in which the applicant did. So there is only one outstanding issue, and it's not really an outstanding issue, it's just the fact that the applicant is requesting that a waterway remain open and unpiped, and that is running along this boundary here, I believe this southwest corner here. They're asking for that waterway to remain open per UDC. And then applicant did provide written testimony to the commission recs. They are asking for a condition, or counsel to consider the applicant to enter into a reimbursement agreement for the sewer trunk or the trunk extension along that McDermott Road frontage. What I have here, or what you have in your hearing outline, currently, our code doesn't support that request, but I at least just want to go on the record, that's something that you, they want you to take under consideration. And I know Warren may want to chime in and give you some background on that as well. Other than that, staff is recommending approval of, P&amp;Z has recommended approval of my presentation, and staff, any questions you may have?
Council, any questions for staff? Who's the applicant here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario, Meridian Business Address. I'm here representing Premier Investments on the Aegean subdivision. As Bill indicated, the property is located just south of the Oaks South subdivision, which is currently under construction into its Phase Six. It is on the east side of McDermott Road and lies adjacent to Five Mile Creek along the south side. To remind you that the multi-use pathway, Four or Five Mile Creek, is on the north side. On the south side is the Nampa, Meridian Irrigation District gravel access road. In my conversations with Greg Curtis, he's indicated that the city picked the north side, so don't, don't anticipate having a pathway on the south side. That's our access road. But obviously, people still use it, walk their dogs, bike, but he wouldn't let me put any micropath connections to it. Here's an aerial photo. A small portion of this property lies within the floodplain and the floodway of Five Mile Creek. That area, along Five Mile Creek, has been mapped by Carl Gephardt when we did Oaks South, so the base flood elevations have been established. The floodway bubbles out right at, kind of at McDermott Road, and that's due to the size of the culvert as it goes under McDermott. That's why you see we left a significant amount of open space on the north side of our collector roadway. We have one access to McDermott that is a collector. It comes in, and we would have manicured landscaping then to the north of that. We would have, obviously, the gravel, Nampa, Meridian access roadway. Our pump station will be located right there, adjacent to Five Mile Creek. There's currently a check structure that Nampa, Meridian installed years ago. They indicated to us that they'd like us to install the pump station there, and they would like to own and maintain it, and we have agreed to that. On your transportation plan and on the master street map, it shows a collector roadway that goes through, through the Oaks and comes into this property. And the Oaks Phase Six has done a trust fund for half the cost of a bridge on Five Mile Creek. My project will be responsible for either trust funding the other half or building it whoever goes first. We continued that collector roadway with no front-on housing to the east boundary. That was discussed and decided by Ada County Highway District. So then the collector roadway, they anticipate, then the collector comes through the Oaks from McMillan. It will loop through into the Quinzer property and go all the way east, linking to Blackcat when the Quinzer property develops. And then they had a stub to the south here so that there will be another collector roadway because there's an undeveloped property south of us, over just southeast, where that collector could go out to Eustick. South of us is Apple Valley subdivision. Those are five-acre lots. That's why I kind of decided to do the R4, R8 mix of zoning. I did meet with those residents. They live on Becky Drive. Go figure. And so I worked with them. One of the things that they asked me to do was to reduce the number of lots next to them, which I did, and increase the lot sizes. And they said, you know, we can live with, you know, two, two and a half lots, three lots maybe next to us, but just try to minimize them. We talked about fencing. There, there's a McFadden drain where their irrigation overflow comes into, the McFadden comes up here and then goes across the north side of Mike Weaver's property and then goes west across McDermott. We are asking the council, obviously, for a waiver to leave that portion of the drain open, and of course, Five Mile Creek. There is a small portion of the drain, which is kind of a stub that goes here. We will be piping that. It is my understanding that the drain takes both wastewater and groundwater, and then Mr. Weaver does have like an artesian well that overflows into that. The staff, when we submitted application, came back to us and said that Mr. Weaver was concerned about the size of these lots. We eliminated three lots adjoining Mr. Weaver's north boundary, widened those out so that they range from 9,000 up to about 10,400 square feet. And we, and I measured, Mr. Weaver's home sits in the back here. It would be 200, his home is 243 feet south of our south boundary of these lots. I also stubbed to his property. We'd stub sewer, we'd stub water. I also did kind of a little cul-de-sac layout that's for him, and gave him a copy of it showing how his property could redevelop, and he could keep his house. And so he was happy with that. As Bill indicated, State Highway 16 extension will be just to the west of McDermott Road. So in addition to the required 25-foot landscape buffer, we add- So in addition to the required 25-foot landscape buffer, we added additional 25-foot, so we will have a 50-foot buffer, allowing us to get a significant birmingham and significant landscaping, so that when that does happen, that we have established a landscape buffer. We have lots that range from about 5,600 square feet, like in this loop, in this area through here, all the way up to 15,500 square feet. We tried to have a variety of lots ranging from 55 feet in width to 70 and 80 feet in width. All of our lots are typically about 120 feet in depth. When you come in, you'll have a nice soft feel with all the landscaping adjacent to Five Mile Creek, the creek will be visible. You'll come in, and the focal point will be our central open space here. This is where our central amenities will be constructed. I have a micropath that comes through, linking that, and then another micropath that cuts through this block, bringing people up to this area. I kind of split the traffic, so we would, we would bring it this way, and then up through this street, and then this street would kind of be isolated, so we have kind of a separation of our different product lines. I have a street that goes to the south, to Apple Valley subdivision, so that at some point in time, if those five-acre lots ever redevelop, they would have access to sewer water, and we would have vehicular access and linkage. Staff also asked me to put a pedestrian access, which I did, right here, and then we'll have another vehicular access. They have half a right-of-way along their entire east boundary, so staff is asking us to build half of this right-of-way, and then they anticipate that that will extend on down to Eustick Road. There was an old, kind of half right-of-way along their north boundary. ACHD said it was not appropriate that if those properties ever redeveloped, that they would ask that they vacate it. It didn't really have any value. It was one of those kind of right-of-way easements that the county had them put in the 70s on those five-acre plats, in anticipation that maybe they'd redevelop and there would be opportunity, whoops, for roadways. But it's just in a real poor location. When talking to the neighbors, I asked them, you know, what's your thoughts? They said, well, that's the access to our irrigation, artesian pump, and we don't want it to be a road. We just want a fence. I said, okay. And the highway district said, you know, it, it doesn't really have any value to us. We have a nice little project with 215 lots. As Bill indicated, our density is 3.43 dwelling units per acre. We are medium-density residential, which is three to eight dwelling units per acre, so we're on that lower end. I would say this is very consistent with what we have in Oaks South, that's just located to the north of us. I did talk with Mr. Quinzer, and sent him a copy of this drawing, asking for his input. He said, yeah, I like the fact that, that you have the stub street. His property will be served, we'll end up having to take a 10-inch sewer line through our property and over to his boundary, and his property will sewer through that trunk line. There's a 12-inch water line that's in Fawn Ridge in the Oaks, we'll extend that through our property and stub that also to Mr. Dean Quinzer. The one thing I wanted to mention to the council, the lift station that's located here that has additional capacity to serve this property, on your master sewer map, it shows a 36-inch sewer trunk line coming across Five Mile Creek, and then coming down to our southern boundary. That 36-inch trunk is approximately 30 feet deep. I have had a meeting with Warren in the past about the possibility of some type of latecomer fees or some eligibility in the future, because no developer that I'm aware of in the 25 years that I've done work in Meridian has ever constructed a 36-inch trunk 30 feet deep at his sole expense without any opportunity for either city participation or for reimbursement. We only have 215 lots. An 8-inch equivalent is satisfactory to serve our property. Obviously, the 12-inch water main, based on your water model, is necessary, and we understand that. And so we will come up to the new well here, and we will extend a 12-inch water main to our southern boundary also. I did get a construction cost estimate from a contractor in town who just bid a project for the city of Nampa that was a 36-inch, 30 feet deep, where they had groundwater, and so the estimated cost was in excess of $500,000. So it, it's a pretty hefty price for, for a project that only has 215 lots, but I do fully understand the way your reimbursement ordinance is written. It says, hey, if it's on the master plan and you're developing, then you build it. So I, obviously, in my responses to the council, wanted to mention that, you know, this is kind of something, new territory, and Warren even mentioned, you know, in our earlier meetings, I'd like to help you, because you're right, you don't need a 36-inch, you don't need it 30 feet deep, but until we rewrite that reimbursement ordinance where situations like this arise, my hands are tied. So Warren may be able to kind of elaborate on that. We think we've got a great project. It's, like I said, growth is, is going, where'd it go? Growth is, you know, obviously going south of the Oaks, and this makes sense, and it's a continuation of your normal growth patterns. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Becky?
Mr. President.
Mr. Morton.
Becky, that, one of your last comments on the 36-inch trunk, is it, your position that the, that 36-inch trunk isn't necessary, or it's not necessary specific to the needs of this project?
Chairman Byrd, Councilman Borton, it is not necessary for the needs of this project, but it is necessary in your master sewer plan to service areas to the south, for that sewer shed to go up to the new lift station.
Mr. President, a couple of other questions. There was a comment in the opening about the transit stop and VRT's request. Has that been discussed and resolved, or?
Chairman Byrd, Councilman Borton, yes. Sonia did send me the VRT email, and so my thought would be to create a pullout turnout right here. That's a perfect spot for it, right there. We've got ample area where they could have a pullout and have a bus stop. So we do have a condition under 1.1, 1.1E, that says we will coordinate with Valley Transit for the potential for a regional stop. Now, I'm not sure if long-term, they're going to want one here, because Ada County Highway District currently has McDermott as a minor arterial, but when State Highway 16 goes in and McDermott becomes disconnected from Chenden, and it will be downgraded, I'm told, to a collector. So not sure if, you know, the long-range plans of VRT are up with ITD and ACHD as far as classifications, you know, in the future. But obviously, we don't know when Phase 2 of that State Highway 16 will take place.
Mr. President, it sounds like the communications happened in the-
Yes, sir.
-the agreement for that condition, okay. There was a comment on Five Mile Creek improved as an amenity, but I wasn't certain what, if anything, actually is being done to it, or just to remain open?
Councilman Byrd, I mean, Councilman Borton, I think that was one of the comments from one of the neighbors. They were saying on the north side, that the Oaks is, is constructing the 10-foot multi-use pathway. They're obviously manicuring that pathway, and one, and Mr. Weaver said, I don't understand why they can't do that on the south. And so that's where that comment came from. Well, the reason we can't is, south side is the maintenance side for Nampa, Meridian, and they're not going to allow me to do that. We could, obviously, between the gravel access road for Nampa, Meridian, maintenance, we could do, you know, like red fescue or something, so, you know, visually it has, you know, some riparian look, but the manicured area will have to be, obviously, there at the entrance on the north side of my collector.
Last, Mr. President, last question. Was there a, and I didn't see it, if it's in the report, I apologize. Is there a, a limit in the number of permits before there's a second access?
The fire department will allow us up to 30 permits with one point of ingress and egress. So the way I phased the project, Phase 1 would meet that 30. Phase 2 then would have to build the bridge, connecting both the Oaks South and this project, giving us our second point of access. And we showed five phases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Little Roberts.
Becky, you mentioned Mr. Weaver and how close his house was to the property, to Project North. How far is his house, rather than property, sorry, on the other side?
301 feet to the east.
Thank you.
There it is. So here's Mr. Weaver's home. So from the rear property line, not to the home, is 243 feet to the corner of his house. From here, what'd I do? Dang it, Bill, something. To the east, that's 300, 301 feet.
Thank you.
And then, as you can see, we also did the distance from the homes on the five-acre lots, which ranged 445 to 531. So that gives you the distance. So that's why they, you know, they weren't really concerned about, you know, you know, any, any two stories or anything like that, because we do have such significant separation. We also have the drain between us and Mr. Weaver, the McFadden drain, right here.
Great. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Warren, would you like to speak on the sewer?
President Byrd, councilmember, sure. I'll take a moment and talk about that a little bit. So the sewer master plan calls for a 36-inch diameter trunk to run down McDermott Road. Obviously, this development will drop into that trunk line. It's necessary for them to feed back to the lift station. They wouldn't necessarily need something that large, but we have to extend that trunk eventually on to serve other areas of town. Our reimbursement agreement for the city right now doesn't allow for reimbursement for the installation of infrastructure that's called out in the master plan. So since the master plan calls out for that 36-inch diameter trunk, that's what they have to build. Now, I realize that's a significant expense for this, but you look at that and you say, okay, the alternatives are to create some sort of new reimbursement agreement or, or ordinance that allows us to do that. You end up with stacked reimbursement agreements potentially that could extend clear down to our southern boundary with Kuna, and it gets really cumbersome to, to administer. So trying to find a simple solution to that is difficult. We've looked at that, we've talked with the, even you as the city council in the past about that, about the potential to maybe look at that at some point in the future. Although right now, with the growth that we're experiencing, those kind of things typically are incentives to continue to grow. I don't know that we need an incentive right now to grow more in the city of Meridian. But that's something that, if directed by you, we could investigate that and, and perhaps pursue that, but at this point, we don't have a means or a mechanism to provide a reimbursement agreement for that infrastructure. I would say that in the presentation that I gave just last week, where we talked about the future of South Meridian, we talked about this McDermott trunk line, and that in 2025, after we have basically taken care of our responsibilities at the wastewater treatment plant to a large extent, the city is planning to use city funds, if you guys approve, to start installing this trunk sewer line. But we don't plan to do that until about 2025. So the city is not prepared, or Public Works is not prepared yet in our planning to do this for a few years. Hopefully, that answers some of your questions.
Any questions for?
Mr. President?
And Mr. Palmer.
Not necessarily a question, I guess, just a thought. It seems about every six months, we kind of have this conversation, and we get the request, and, and then we talk about how complicated it is and how we really don't want to do it, and thanks for developing anyway, and kind of send them out the door with approval and, and hope they'll still go ahead and do it. I think more than it being an incentive for growth, what we have in existence is actually a disincentive to development. And so I'd hope that we can figure out the complications around it and, and find a way of making it happen to, to remove the disincentive rather than create an incentive. Understanding that probably we can't do that today.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Maybe, I guess, then a question for Warren. To Councilmember Palmer's point, this has been discussed multiple times. Has there been direction given to your department to start exploring this and coming up with alternatives for council to undertake?
Council president, members of the council, Councilman Cavanagh. I, I can't remember just exactly what we had talked about the last time we visited. We talked about this issue to some degree. We talked about the potential complications. I think there was a mixed message about, some folks thought it was, might be interested in pursuing it. I know that in, you know, we had this kind of on the laundry list of things to do. And I know from conversations that Dale has had, whether that was with conversations with council liaison, conversations with the mayor, I'm not really sure, but Dale has, has directed the engineering staff, at least, that this is not a high priority item. We will try and get to it as soon as we can, but this is not something that, you know, my understanding is that he has directed that this is not a priority for us, something that we should expend much time and effort on at this point. So that's, we haven't. We haven't expended a lot of time and effort. We've kind of put it on the back burner. We think it's something that we might want to look at in the future. Certainly, if you look at the growth that the city of Meridian has currently, it wouldn't appear that this has been a big stumbling block for us for growth. That's just anecdotal information. I'm not trying to make a, a point or anything, but, you know, having a reimbursement agreement, we've had them in the past, they've been challenging in the past. They, the one that I understood that they had prior to my even coming to the city of Meridian was very problematic, and they got rid of it for that reason. Some cities have reimbursement agreements, some cities don't, and some of them are more complicated than others. But it's really about, do you want to incentivize growth out here on the perimeter, or do you want to drive growth that's contiguous to existing infrastructure?
Any other questions?
Mr. President, maybe just a, a comment then. I don't think it's, it's one or the other. I think it's us as a council being responsive to the needs of the development community and not over, I hate to use the word tax, but to, to put them in a position where they're expending funds maybe that aren't always necessary. And so I guess for me, I do see it as maybe more of a, of a priority, and I guess I would maybe ask the council president to meet with the mayor and perhaps schedule this for a workshop discussion in the next, you know, few months.
Council president, I would say that I think, you know, the city of Meridian is investing in excess of $8 million right now in infrastructure in the South Meridian area. So I think we have stepped forward in a huge way to invest ahead of growth in order to allow development in certain areas. It's just about how much can we do and where can we do it. We've got a lot of things going on at the treatment plant, we're doing South Meridian, we have a plan for this area. We plan to, to, to do infrastructure projects in this area that will allow growth to occur. It's just a matter of timing.
Reimbursements can be big headaches, because you go down the line and, and people forget that they got reimbursements coming, and, and we for some time forget to pay it. And, but I, every development going down there until 20- Every development going down there until 2025, unless we get moved ahead, is going to be paying for this thirty-six-inch line, am I right? Anybody on McDermott?
Anybody on this southern part of McDermott, going south on McDermott from the lift station until 2025, would be theoretically responsible for installing the sewer trunk line that would be necessary to serve those properties or to get to those properties.
Mr. Neri, I got a question for you. In a DA, could you put a reimbursement in that if the city started putting it in at their expense that this developed, that through the DA you could reimburse them to a degree?
Mr. President, members of the council? You could, but again, it's another enforcement mechanism. One of the things we did when we crafted this original reimbursement was we looked at all projects from a certain date backwards, because we could identify those at that time easier than just putting it in a development agreement and not having any other mechanism in which to go and locate those. So, I mean, there is no easy answer, I would agree, that maybe having a fuller discussion at a future workshop would be the best, but there certainly are pitfalls and pluses and minuses, no matter which way we've looked at these, but certainly a fuller discussion about that would be, would certainly be warranted.
I think we can arrange that for a working session to go over that. I think it'd be, it's a great idea. Okay, any, this is a public hearing, you got any signups?
Mr. President, there were no signups.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to testify on this? Seeing none, Becky, you got anything more to say? Any counsel?
It's your pleasure.
Mr. President?
Ms. Little Roberts.
I move we close the public hearing.
Got a motion to close the public hearing on H-2017-0114. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is closed. Ms. Palmer.
Mr. President, I move we approve H-2017-0114 and remove the requirement to tile the waterway.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd. Aye. Okay, moving on to item D, H-2017-0124. That you again, Bill?
That's me, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and start with staff.
Thank you, councilmen, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the TM Creek Apartments. The applications before you this evening are for a development agreement modification, zoning ordinance amendment, and a conditional use permit. Site consists of 8.16 acres of land, Zone CG, and is generally located south of West Franklin Road and east of South Ten Mile Road. This property was annexed in 2013 with a development agreement and a preliminary plat known as TM Creek. DA was later amended in 2016. The future land use designations on this property are mixed-use commercial and lifestyle The applicant is proposing to amend the DA to change the development plan on the south side of Ten Mile Creek and the east side of Phase One from commercial retail, which is depicted on the left, to the new concept plan which is shown on the right, to, from commercial to multifamily residential. Instead of two large commercial buildings, the applicant now proposes to construct two multifamily structures, containing a total of 240 dwelling units with associated garages and site improvements and a clubhouse. Because multifamily residential is desired in both of those land use designations, staff is supportive of the proposed concept plan change or DA modification as requested by the applicant. The density for this proposed development will be approximately 29.4 dwelling units to the acre, which is also consistent with those two land use designations. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the UDC. In particular, currently, the way the multifamily standards are structured in our code in the UDC, the, any multifamily unit has to provide a minimum amount of common or private open space. Early in our code, the way it's written, the applicant or anyone that does multifamily has to provide a minimum open space, of private open space of eighty square feet. Because this is an open, more of an urban setting, more walkable community, and based on the amenity package that the developer is proposing with this project and the design of this project, staff is amenable to that UDC text amendment. The only difference between where the applicant has originally proposed the change and where staff's recommendation is going is how we handle that proposed change. So when the application came into the city, the developer had proposed that they changed the multifamily standards, the patio standards currently written in the UDC. We didn't want them, staff didn't feel comfortable with that change being citywide, because if you change one section, then every apartment would have the ability to provide a smaller patio. In some instances, again, that's appropriate, in this case, we feel it isn't because of urban setting. So if you have garden-style apartments, you're in suburban, you have more traditional multifamily development, a larger patio makes sense. So our recommendation to not only you, but also the Planning and Zoning Commission, was to allow the patio requirements to be part of the alternative compliance process. That would give the direct, it would be a staff-level approval, it would give the director to review that applicant's request on a case-by-case basis and not change it citywide for all multifamily developments. That seems to give the city some assurances that not, they, in order to get an approval for an alternative compliance, you have to provide something equal to or better than. And so that's why staff feels, and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt, that that was the most appropriate location for the text change in the alternative compliance section, not changing the specific use standards for multifamily developments. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the applicant agreed with staff's recommendation to change their request as part of an alternative compliance request rather than the way they had originally submitted. The conditional use permit for you this evening, again, as I mentioned to you, is for 240 dwelling units on approximately 8.16 acres of land, Zone CG, they are four-story structures, and again, the proposed density is 29.4 dwelling units to the acres. Access is proposed from future collector streets from South Ten Mile Road and West Franklin Road, and parking proposed in accordance with UD standards for the development with seven additional parking stalls, so they are in excess of what the UDC requires. Two four-story structures, or excuse me, common open spaces proposed in accord with UDC standards. The applicant is proposing a total of 1.44 acres in the landscape plan that's before you this evening. Proposed site amenities, as I alluded to you, their justification as to why they're going forth with the text amendment change is, one, again, more urban-style development here, and you'll see the architecture here in a moment, but also the amenity package that they're proposing, and I'll go through those for you very quickly. So one, they're proposing a separate clubhouse, which will have a lounge and entertainment area, a public Wi-Fi, workstations, a fitness center, a CrossFit studio, a swimming pool, indoor bicycle storage, a maintenance room, outdoor fire pits, and a table tennis, and also separate barbecue area where residents won't necessarily need to have individual barbecues on their patios, but they'll have an area where they can join and interact with other residents within the complex. Here's their open space exhibit that demonstrates their compliance with the UDC standards. The architectural character of the apartments, again, are more of a contemporary design, again, four stories, a mix of stucco, and you can see here, the applicant, again, more of an urban setting as I alluded to, but this is more of a contemporary design, anything that they propose out there will have to comply with our architectural standards manual as well. So I'll let you know that that will have to come back, get staff levels approval of a design review application. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of all three of the applications. Speaking in favor was John Wardle, no one spoke in opposition, and no one commented on the application, and we did receive written testimony in agreements with the staff report from Mike Wardle. Some of the item, one item that was discussed by the commission, and this seems to come up on a regular basis, is commission is starting to get concerned with the amount of parking that are, that are being proposed with multifamily developments. As I alluded to you this evening, this site does exceed the minimum standard of the UDC. The issue that was brought up at the hearing was, a lot of times when you have an apartment complex that has some garage parking, it's, where they were concerned was using the garage for storage rather than for parking. So again, our UDC addresses those, addresses those types of things, but I wanted to let you know what they discussed in their deliberations. Again, they did support the design and the density of this project, so that wasn't an issue. So again, any other changes to the staff report? The Planning and Zoning Commission did not have any changes to our conditions for you this evening. They recommend approval. To my knowledge, there aren't any outstanding issues before you this evening. I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Bill, refresh my memory, how many four-story apartment complexes do we have in Meridian?
Mr. President, members of the council, I can't recall. The only ones that I can recall are the ones next to Regency at River Valley, next to the Village.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question for Chief Butterfield, sorry to put you on the spot. Ladder truck, we've only got one, ability to be able to service both facilities? I just, I guess, do we need to start planning, being prepared to see a budget amendment for another ladder truck sooner rather than later?
President, councilmember Cavanagh, I don't anticipate adding one more complex like this would justify the need to purchase an entire additional ladder truck to the one that we currently have.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing then, Mr. Wardle, would you like to approach?
Good evening, Mr. President, councilmembers, glad to be here. My name is John Wardle, my address is 12601 West Explorer Drive in Boise, and I work for Brighton. We're happy to be here tonight to talk about this project. I'll be brief, and I can stand, I can answer any questions you have, but I did want to go over a little bit on this, this project. As mentioned, we were, we are modifying the location of some of the uses within the Ten Mile Creek project. In context, we also have the Ten Mile Crossing project, which is to the south, and we just opened up the first business down there, we have more coming. There are 400 people that are working there right now, and we felt like it was time to bring the opportunity to live out here as well. And this location in particular, which we're south of Franklin and we are east, or east of Ten Mile, we're right along the Ten Mile Creek corridor, which we are improving currently with a regional pathway system. It will be landscaped, there'll be a hard-service pathway, which is already down to the apartment site, and landscaped all the way through, and our hope is that will be the regional corridor for this location, which makes the other part of the request that we have before you tonight, which was the UDC text amendment, or the amendment for the decrease in size of the private open space. We do support staff's recommendation to treat this as alternative compliance. It does need to be project-specific. Changing it across the board in the text for all projects may not be the right approach, but I think as demonstrated with this project and other projects, where we can show that the amenities provided, both internally as well as externally, the pathways we have, that's a good, that's a good approach. As mentioned by Bill, we do have two four-story apartment buildings. I will note that there is one other project as mentioned, but this will be the first project which will also include elevators in both of these buildings, which is different than what we have currently. So this truly is an urban-style project. There, as also mentioned, we do have both covered and open parking on this project. The amenities that are shown, we have a swimming pool, entertainment areas, lounge, fitness center, also a cardio studio, indoor bike storage, outdoor gathering areas, barbecues, onsite management, and probably most importantly is, the residents here will have direct access to the Ten Mile Creek regional pathway, as well as the other pathways that we are building to connect to the south with Ten Mile Crossing. Just wanted to show you what this project will look like and the form and shape that we're anticipating here. As already mentioned, we are requesting a reduction for that private outdoor usable space, but it is offset by the amenity package that we have here. We do agree with the staff's recommendation to amend the UDC table and use alternative compliance, and we also respectfully request your approval of the text amendment, the modification of the development agreement, and concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit for the multifamily project. Again, we're excited for this project, we think it will start adding to the fabric of the Ten Mile specific area plan, and excited for some of the other things that are happening out there to create this place where somebody can work and live and shop in a very good, well-planned-out-thought community. I stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Wardle? John?
Yes.
These, these buildings match up identic, are really nice with what we got going on out there in the office and buildings and stuff. You guys have went way and above the call of duty for this, and I thank you very much, they're beautiful buildings.
Thank you, President.
I don't say that much on apartments, but they really, they really, and the four stories fits right in. Your amenities are second to none. It's just beautiful.
I, I would like to thank Mr. Turnbull, who takes pride in what he does, and it makes it very easy for us to do projects because it's not just go in and be done, but we want to be able to say for the city of Meridian, these are projects that we do, these are the standard, and so thank you for the compliment.
Thank you. Any other questions or statements?
Right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
You got anybody signed up? Nobody signed up? This is a public hearing, would anybody like to testify? State your name and address, please.
Jeanette Aukerman, 2070 West Waltman, Meridian, Idaho. I live out in this area, off Ten Mile and Franklin, and I appreciate the work that they're doing and the amenities that they've done on the project. My only concern with this project is actually the fact that it is a four-story apartment complex, not two, not three, but four. We have another major apartment complex just Kitty Corner across Franklin and Ten Mile. I think it's around 650 units with two and three-story apartment complexes, and to add another one that's four-story seems a bit much out there, where we have rural land to the southeast of this. I know it's a little bit farther away, but it is a huge building. I'm not opposed necessarily to the apartments, it's more the height of them. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Can you share with us what your concern about the height is?
The height, I guess it would be the height along with the, as you add height, you add more tenants as well, but just structurally out there, I know they have the big business complexes that are going in, which is residence, you understand that, you've got traffic during the day, but when you start adding apartments and the volume of the traffic and just the visual space they take up height-wise, it's concerning that this is becoming much more urban and not, we're losing some of our rural neighborhoods out in that area, because it's, it's a lot of homes and neighborhoods, and now we're adding these huge, huge buildings.
Mr. President, Paul. Ms. Aukerman, do you feel the same way, we've got four and five-story, you know, commercial buildings that are going on in that same area, do you have the same?
You know, we've been watching them in our neighborhood, I think it comes down to, again, it's the people and the traffic that we're going to be concerned about. Businesses, eight to five, they come, they go, they leave, but apartments don't, you know, with the volume of the people, and, and it just structurally, the height of this is concerning. I know when they did the zoning some time ago with the property around us, we were concerned with what was being zoned and the density... concerned with what was being zoned and the densities of that, so just wanted to express that concern.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anybody else like to testify? Mr. Wardle, you have nothing more to say? That, council, it looks like the public testimony is over with. I would entertain a motion or unless you need some more answers or questions for the public.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
I have a somewhat nerdy question for legal counsel. On the UDC amendment request, it cites a particular provision that through this process has been changed, 11-4-3 and so on. Now everyone's in agreement that a different section, 11-5B-5, I believe, is the location of what will now become an alternative compliance provision. Is there any, is there anything specific we would need to do to, is it just approving a modified UDC change? Or is it, that's not denying their request and proposing a different one, and if it is approved with this new section, are we approving the requested UDC change and then kind of concurrently staff's completed its alternative compliance and is recommended be approved? Was that for a, kind of a convoluted question?
So, Mr. President, members of council, Councilman Borton, I think, I think what the staff, if I understand correctly, what the staff was recommending was the interpretation of the council that alternative compliance is available under the other code section that's already in the UDC.
Okay.
So they're not asking you to amend the UDC, they're saying would the council's interpretation be that it is available under this section, not under the section that was originally identified as the one that was required?
Mr. President, so is the, is the portion of the application that requests the UDC amendment withdrawn?
No, Mr. President, Councilman Borton, when they submitted their application, their narrative stated they wanted to change that specific section. As we did our staff report, our staff report reflects the areas where we want the change to happen, so there's nothing in the council's motion to change in the staff report. Our recommendation through this process was, they originally wanted, with the original application's middle, they wanted to change that section. As we wrote the staff report and we formulated our recommendation to commission and city council, we felt, staff felt it was most appropriate to look at that request, but put it in a different section of the code. It was more appropriate as an altern, in our opinion, it was a better place fit for the community to have that as an alternative compliance request. So we tailored our staff report to make it part of UDC, the 5B-5. So that's already referenced in the staff report, that change has already happened. I'm just letting you know on the record that the original request was a different section. They were amenable to going through an alternative compliance process, so there's nothing to, to change in the staff report or any recommendation except for whether or not you support the text amendment that's before you this evening. Stated by staff and reaffirmed by the applicant and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting myself a little sideways. I understood the original request to be that wholesale change to reduce 80 to 60, and in lieu of that initial, initial request, it was concluded that existing alternative compliance might allow you to get there and therefore not need the initial request of the UDC change in all circumstances. That's what's got me sort of sidetracked.
Mr. President, if I might, John Wardle for the record. I guess in essence, we're withdrawing our original request to modify the zoning ordinance for a wholesale change.
Okay.
But the recommendation tonight now, based on staff's report and what the commission approved, was changing the zoning or the UDC, that this change could occur under alternative compliance. Currently, you can't get there under alternative compliance, so there is a need to change the text of the UDC to allow that, and if, if we need to go back and have staff review that when we do our CCC and DR applications, they can, they can review alternative compliance at that point in time. So there is a change to the text that's being requested.
Okay. Makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Now that I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. President. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Miss Little Roberts.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Hey, you've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H-2017-0124. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Now what's your pleasure, council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
If there's no additional discussion, I would move that we approve H-2017-0124 to include staff and applicant comment as been amended through today's hearing. Second.
Okay, you've got a motion and a second to approve H-2017-0124. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just one comment to echo your comments earlier, Mr. Byrd. A few of us were fortunate to attend the topping-off ceremony for a building over there, and many of the employees of Paylocity, which live in Boise, or work in Boise, were able to come out to this event. And when you see a project like this, you see this is truly that live, work, play, all in one place. I, I, I just know that many of the employees of Paylocity are going to want to live in this facility. I think back to when I was a little younger and a little more active, this is the exact type of place that I would want to live, and so I'm excited to bring this to Meridian. I think it's the right type of project for the right part of town.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilman Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilman Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye. Okay, next item, Madden subdivision, H-2017-0121. I will open the public hearing and start out with staff report. Is that you, Josh? Good.
Evening, Mr. President, members of council. As you said, this is for, it's called Madden subdivision. It is a combined preliminary and final plat application. The site consists of 8.38 acres of land, which is currently zoned CG, located at the northeast corner of North Locust Grove Road and East Franklin Road. I will say that if you remember last Tuesday evening, a rezone was approved for this property to rezon in northern, essentially the northern half of the property industrial, and the south, the southern, the southern half of the property would remain CG. So as I said, a combined preliminary and final plat application is proposed, which consists of three building lots on 8.38, 38 acres of land in the CG and IL zoning district for Madden subdivision. The UDC restricts access to arterial streets when access is available from a local street. This property has frontage on Nola Road and Lenark Street, Franklin Road and Locust Grove Road. There are two existing access points to the site from both East Franklin Road and from North Locust Grove, which are both classified as arterial roadways. Since property has access to Nola and Lenark, access to the arterials should be restricted. If approval for access is obtained from the city council and the Ada County Highway District, city staff is of the opinion that a single access point to each arterial be granted and that the accesses be shared. The applicant has indicated that they will also construct access points to both Nola Road and Lenark Street, which is, as I said, are both considered local commercial streets. A 10-foot wide street, a 10-foot wide street buffer is required to be provided along East Lenark Street and Nola Road, which are both public streets set forth in the UDC. The applicant has proposed a 20-foot landscape buffer along East Lenark, even though only a 10-foot is otherwise required, and a 25-foot landscape buffer is required both along North Locust Grove and East Franklin Roads, which again are both designated as arterial roadways. There are existing sidewalks along both Locust Grove and Franklin. Sidewalks are required to be provided with the development along both Nola Road and Lenark Street, and the applicant has, is required to obtain approval of certificate of zoning compliance for any future buildings on the site as well as administrative design review. I will note that the applicant has asked for, as I said, multiple access points on two Locust Grove, one onto Franklin. We did receive a staff report from the Highway District. Staff has concerns that, if you've read the staff report, the access points onto Locust Grove will only be 114 feet apart from each other, and the Highway District has indicated that they have modified their, their policy to allow for that, and discussions with Caleb Hood, it seems a little bit close, and we're a little bit nervous about how, how close those are. Staff's recommendation still is that there be one shared access on the property line to Locust Grove and one shared access on the property line to Locust Grove, the understanding that the likely developer of Lot 1 here to the north is Gensco, which is a construction material distributor. They will have semi-trucks coming in, and staff, a little bit nervous about semi-trucks coming out onto Locust Grove when they have the ability to take access from the local streets and get to the intersection to get out onto the busier roads. Having said that, the applicant is requesting tonight two Locust Grove access points and one onto Franklin. So as I said, commission did recommend approval. Summary of that was Doug Tamura, the applicant was in favor. There was none in opposition. No other public comment was received, did not receive any written testimony. I was the staff member that presented. Bill Parsons also commented on the application. There was no discussion or no, no key issues of public testimony, as I said. Issues of the discussion by the commission were the number of access points, both specifically to Locust Grove and to Franklin. The commission recommended the applicant be allowed to have, to have access points onto, on two onto Locust Grove, and the outstanding issues for commission tonight or for council tonight are, again, the number of vehicle access points both onto Locust Grove and to Franklin. So the commission did recommend approval, and I'll stand for any questions anyone has.
Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
Josh, is the Franklin Road request one full access and one right in, right out?
So let me, let me, kind of, I, I highlighted the sections of the staff report that, if you want me to go through those real quick and kind of tell you what the decision was here. Onto Franklin, it says the applicant should be required to close the existing driveway onto Franklin Road, located approximately 263 feet east of Locust Grove, with a vertical curb gutter and sidewalk to match the existing improvements. ACHD staff recommends a modification of policy to allow the existing driveway on Franklin Road, located approximately 391 feet east of Locust Grove, to remain as a right-in, right-out only driveway. This driveway was constructed by ACHD in coordination with the property owner as part of the Locust Grove Road and Franklin Road intersection project. The driveway location was agreed upon at that time and met the spacing requirements at the time of construction. The 129-foot or 32% modification of policy is approved at the Development Services Manager level. So specifically for Franklin Road, Meridian's planning staff doesn't necessarily have an issue with the one access point. We still would request that it be shared between the two properties. The understanding is they don't have a user for either of lots two or three yet, so we're not sure who's going to go there, but we, we know that the property to the north, they have an applicant for, will be an industrial user. Moving on to the section on Locust Grove, now this is where staff has the majority of our concern, it says, "Staff recommends a modification of policy to allow the existing driveway on Locust Grove Road, located 240 feet, 248 feet north of Franklin Road and to remain as a right-in, right-out only driveway." Then it says, "The northern driveway was constructed by ACHD as part of Locust Grove Road and Franklin Road intersection project, and it's approved in its current location as a temporary full-access driveway." It says, "The applicant's proposal does not meet district driveway location and successive driveway policies, which require driveways on minor arterial roadways to be located a minimum of 355 feet from the nearest intersection and 330 feet from any other driveway. The existing driveways are 114 feet apart," and it says in parentheses, "330 feet is typically required." "And the southern driveway is located 248 feet north of Franklin Road, when 355 again would be required." So staff's concern is their proximity to the intersection and then their proximity to each other as, as approved by the Highway District. Typically, we don't question too much what the Highway District's proposal is or recommendation is, but staff has concerns about the nearness of those two on, on Locust Grove and their safety. So yeah.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Doug?
Mr. Pre, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Doug Tamura. I'm representing Kobe LLC on this project, and we, we purchased this property prior to the Locust Grove Franklin improvements going in, and so part of what you see now is what we'd negotiated, so we told the Highway District that, and particularly now it's even more important that access is everything for property, and so we were hoping that historically we'd, we preserved these access points that we got on both Franklin and Locust Grove, and that's why the Highway District's been willing to accommodate us on Franklin. Our design of, of the northern property is going to be sold to Gensco, which is a train distributor, mechanical heating, cooling, and so our design of our project is that the semi-trucks would use both Lenark and Nola access, and that as mechanical contractors come to, you know, pick up furnaces, that our thought was is if we had this full access on both Locust Grove and Lenark, that would provide, you know, kind of a separate access for those, you know, not large semi-trucks, but trucks, you know, and that's why we're hoping that we could preserve those two access points on Locust Grove. We had planning and zoning support for our two accesses, understanding the need for our potential tenant, so, but, you know, I appreciate your support if we could have them.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Say something, kind of, I guess, sorry. Touch on something that kind of had my ears park up. Not large semi-trucks, but trucks, I guess, can you share with us what you believe to be is the size of a truck that's going to be accesses for your?
And I'm not sure how Gensco works, but they're the train distributor, and train is just their standard, you know, they do both commercial rooftops and they do residential furnaces, so I'm assuming that, you know, and plus the, the demand for residential in, in particularly the valley and particularly Meridian is huge, and so the eventual buildout of this facility is going to be 70,000 feet of distribution. So the amount of traffic that's going to come in here, and I think that sometimes the, the more access you can provide to a facility like that, the better off we are. And I'm hoping that, you know, the smaller trucks of the local HVAC contractors will use the Locust access, the larger semi-trucks will use, you know, Lenark and Nola access.
Any other questions?
Aye, thanks.
This is a public hearing. Everybody signed up? Would anybody like to testify? Seeing none, Doug, do you want to have a last word? Okay, council? Need any more public testimony or questions or anything to add? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. President.
Palmer?
I move we close the public hearing on H-2017-0121.
Second.
Got a motion to close the public hearing in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I move we approve H-2017-0121, preserving the existing accesses.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve H-2017-0121. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
The, the accesses as requested by the applicant, for those that are approved in the motion.
Any more discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you call roll?
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilman Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye. Okay, moving on to item F. I'll open the public hearing for H-2017-0115. I think it's one of the staff, I'll give it to the staff, or you?
Me.
You, Josh?
Me.
You, Josh?
Got it, sir.
Okay. You want to open it?
Good. So this is what, an application for, it's called Pond Subdivision. It is for a preliminary plat. The site consists of approximately 4.82 acres of land, which is currently zoned R8. It's located at 2980 North Meridian Road. This land was previously annexed and zoned and granted conditional use permit approval in 2012 for what's called Tomorrow's Hope. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is medium density residential. The proposed plat consists of 21 single-family residential building lots and five common area lots. And as I said, approximately 4.82 acres of land in an R8 zoning district. Minimum lot size is approximately 4,129 square feet. And the minimum lot size in the R8 district is 4,000 square feet. Proposed overall density for the development is 4.35 billion units per acre with a net density of 6.47, which is consistent with the medium density residential designation. Staff has reviewed the proposed plat for compliance with the dimensional standards listed in the UDC and for the R8 district. And with the exceptions of lots 3, 4, and 5 of Block 2, the plat was found to be in compliance with those standards. Lots 3, 4, and 5 of Block 2 shall be revised to meet the above named standards. Access to the site is proposed on the plat from an existing access to North Meridian Road. Existing access shall be converted to a public road and the commercial access for the residential care facility and the driveway for the existing home shall be reconfigured. A stub street is proposed to the east for future extension and interconnectivity. So that would be this location. There is one common driveway proposed. The applicant is proposing lots 6, 7, 8, and 9, or excuse me, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 of Block 1 take access from that single common driveway. Open space amenities are not a requirement for this plat because the plat is under the threshold of five acres. The applicant has however provided approximately quarter of an acre of open space for the development, which includes the landscape buffer along North Meridian Road and several common lots. There is an existing home and associated outbuildings on the site that are proposed to remain, which would be on Lot 1, Block 1, as you can see here clearly. All existing structures that are proposed to remain with the subdivision of the property must comply with the setback standards in the R8 district. There is an existing outbuilding on Lot 1, which is this outbuilding here by my mouse. It's within the required street yard. UDC restricts detached accessory buildings from being located in this setback. The applicant is requesting that the city council allow the accessory building to remain on the property in its current location. Staff recommends that the structure be removed with the development of the first phase unless approved to remain by city council. Additionally, the, the Osweiler now crosses the southern property of the site. All ditches on the site are required to be piped unless waived by city council. And the applicant is also requesting a waiver from city council to keep this lateral open due to its large capacity. The applicant has submitted some conceptual building elevations for the future homes in the subdivision. A six-foot tall vinyl fence is proposed along the perimeter boundary of the subdivision. And the Osweiler Canal, if the Osweiler Canal will not be improved as part of the development to be a water amenity, the lateral is required to be fenced with an open vision fence at least six feet in height and having an 11, 11-gauge, two-inch mesh or other construction equivalent inability, inability to deter access to the lateral. Commission did recommend approval. The summary of the commission's public hearing was Matt Schultz, the applicant, was in favor. There was none in opposition. Ted Williams did comment, did not receive any written testimony. I was the staff member that presented the application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Bill Parsons also commented on that. Key issues of public testimony were questions on how the property to the east, going back to the plat here, maybe to the aerial, how the properties to the east and to the north, specifically these two properties here, would redevelop. Key issues of discussion by the commission were the accessory building that doesn't meet code in terms of its location. There were no changes from the commission to staff's recommendation. And as I said, the two outstanding items for city council are the accessory building that does not meet setback standards and the request to keep open the Osweiler Canal. Not receive any written testimony since the commission. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Counsel, any question for staff at this time?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Josh, it looked like on a previous slide that there's a, an access road, an access drive to the existing structure, and that's, I guess, right next to Baldwin Street. Am I seeing that as a two roads that are going to be right next to each other? Two streets that are right next to each other?
Commissioner Cavanagh, you're referring to this area as I'm indicating by my mouse? So their, their, staff's requirement is that obviously there's some work going to have to be done to coordinate with this. Staff's intention in writing the requirement would be that the care facility take access from this public street and that the driveway also take access from the public street. We don't want a separate drive aisle-
Right.
-for any of the other structures there. We want them all to use the public street. So they're going to be likely in close proximity here, but, but separate.
Any other questions for staff? Not the applicant? Mr. Schultz?
Good evening, counsel. Matt Schultz, 8421 South 10 Mile. I'm here on behalf of Berkeley Building Company and Mr. and Mrs. Pond, who five years ago were annexed seven acres into the city. The, the north two acres is not a part of this. That was, that's where there's some adult care facilities that they're running out of their house. There was a development agreement executed five years ago that showed future residential, R8 residential. So we're, we're already zoned, we're complying with the, with the development agreement. There's a few minor issues for council's recommendation on, like staff said, on the onwater lateral, which is a pretty large capacity open ditch. The south side, there's a fenced off city pathway next to the silhouette subdivision. Our side is a ditch access road because ditch company always they'll give one path on one side, ditch access road on the other. So we're the ditch access road and we're going to fence it off with a six-foot wrought iron fence to allow them to provide access. And it'll still be the HOA common lot that we have to maintain the weeds in and all of that. The other issue is the fact that the ponds still would like to stay on about three quarters of an acre in the city. So it'll be a very atypical city lot of three quarters of an acre. Already has city services to it going across the field. And it's our challenge as we go forth and build this to maintain access, which we're going to replace their current driveway with a railroad. And then their driveway will come off the end of that. We're going to replace it and, and switch over the utilities to standard utilities as we move forward. So that's, that's my problem moving forward with construction management. But they want to stay there during construction and, and retain the, the three quarters of an acre and we're going to develop. The Berkeley Building Company is going to take the remaining four and build the, the 20 lots on it. But the plat will consist of the whole 4.75 acres. So there was an outbuilding built, I don't know how long ago, but they, they, a lot of their equipment and stuff they used to take care of their two acres is in it. It's about 25 feet forward of the house and 20 feet behind the front of the house. So it kind of straddles that front face of the house. It's still 120 feet back from the new road. This is not a typical city lot. And in a typical city lot, there's no way we'd allow an outbuilding in front of the house, you know, standard six, seven, eight, 10,000 square foot lot, you just wouldn't do it. But in this case, since it's three quarters of an acre, 120 feet back of the new road, you're not even going to see it. Big trees, fence. It's really, I think, a very, very minor issue. Staff rightly pointing it out. We don't disagree with them pointing it out, we're just asking for your, your waiver on that requirement. And your planning commission did show support for it, even though they didn't have the jurisdiction to grant it. They were, they were at least favorable towards, towards that. So it's a pretty easy, straightforward, efficient little project. We're excited to be close to Settlers Park, which is only 500 feet up the road. And that's really our amenity. Here is your multimillion dollar Settlers Park, which is just a fantastic park that we have in this community. So, so with that, we agree with staff's conditions of approval. We're just asking for the, the waiver to keep the onwater lateral open and fenced and to grant the waiver on the ponds not having to tear down a very functional and non-obtrusive structure that, that I don't think's any, you know, it's, it's still, it's still going to be, it'd look fine from the road, you wouldn't even notice it back there. So with that, we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Schultz?
Thanks.
Matt, thank you. Nobody signed up? Would anybody like to testify? Seeing none? Matt, you got one final word?
Mr. President?
Mr. Borton?
I'll ask Matt a question. Make him-
Ah, he did.
-make your work a little. So remind me, the, the fencing solution down on the canal, if it remains open, it's not being improved as a water amenity necessarily because on the, it's on the south side, I understand. There's a condition that has the mesh, I don't know if that's chain link, but the fencing to deter access to the canal, but would it ultimately be designed where you've got the standard residential fencing behind each house and then adjacent to that chain link or are required fencing and kind of a spite strip of-
Here, here's how I look at it, is that I think the mesh is the minimum requirement and the wrought iron is, is still acceptable, has no more than a four-inch gap, kids can't get through it. It's like a, you know, building code type requirements that prevents access through it. And so that would be the only fence along there that we provide between the ditch and the back of the lots, be an open vision. So there's no spite strip at all, just one fence.
Okay. And, Mr. President, so is it, is it to be wrought iron?
I, I, six-foot wrought iron's great, that's what we're planning on doing.
Thanks for clever planning.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Mr. Palmer?
Mr. President, I move we close the public hearing for H 2017-0115.
Second.
Got a motion to close the public hearing in a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, counsel?
Mr.
Any discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Borton?
I move we approve H 2017-0115 and grant the request to allow the existing shop to stay and the waiver for tiling the lateral, but including the other provisions that go along with that.
Second.
You got a motion, a second, to approve with the exceptions? Any discussion?
Mr. President, sorry, just before you, you close on the motion, Bill over here, just want to make it clear that the code doesn't allow the council to ground a waiver for a accessory structure to stay on that lot. That's going to take the applicant to go through a variance process in order to have something different than what's allowed by code. So I just want to make that clear. It's pretty similar to what we did across the street when Madden, I think it was Madden Village came through with the multifamily development and they kept the two adjacent homes. We had that same situation and you had added a condition to that project that they seek a variance application in order to keep the accessory dwelling, the accessory structure. So if it's your intent for that structure to stay where it is, I would have you amend your motion and make it clear that they need to seek a variance request before this body, before that structure stays or remove it from the property.
Second, agree?
Ann was the second.
Do you want to amend your motion?
So, Mr. President, I have a question then. So that's something he has to do later, is that still something that goes through us or that staff handles, understanding our intention? How does that work?
Councilman, or Mr. President, Councilman Palmer, a variance requires council action. So they have to submit, have a neighborhood meeting, go through a public hearing process, post the site, and then come back before this body with a staff recommendation to you for your action.
So then the motion just includes the lateral issue?
We've taken out the structure. Second, agree?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I guess a question for staff. There's not a way that we can handle both of these tonight?
Nope.
Nope. All right.
Clerk, would you call rule?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to open up G, which is the comprehensive plan, H 2017-0113. Excuse me, students, if you'd go to the clerk, he'll give you a City of Meridian pen for sitting through and listen to us as you leave, if you'd like.
That's good analysis.
I'll open the public hearing on the comprehensive plan text amendment. And which staff? Is that you, Brian, or, okay, Brian?
Members of city council, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to speak to the comprehensive plan text update and the existing conditions report 2017 update. So we're, we're doing this a little bit differently tonight. We have three items to cover tonight and what we're doing in two different groups. The first group includes the yearly review of comprehensive plan policy statements and department text and then the existing conditions report. You've already seen some of the ECR existing conditions report from others, notably Bruce Chatterton kind of stole some of my thunder. But I'd really like to have that conversation with you tonight and then take suggestions on improvement for the future. These changes together are what staff consider to be administrative changes. Providing these tonight would really help us, help staff to move these on and to other projects and responsibilities and then to get the ECR out there. The second group and third item are proposed policy and text changes to the comprehensive plan related to the rims, the north and south rims. We're separating this out to have a more focused and focused conversation with you. We've received two letters, one in support from the South Meridian Coalition and one asking for more time to discuss from the BCA. Caleb will discuss this item last when I'm all done. So it changes to text. This is the, the kind of fluffy stuff, the stuff that talks about what we want our parks to be, what sort of public works facilities we have. These are generally administrative texts to reflect actual operations, so we have more employees, we have more parks, things of that nature. But this does not include the policy statements, that's next. Generally, they reflect actual operations, what we're doing now. There are some examples shown here, but too many to go through one by one. If any of the other revisions described in the application were of interest, I'd be happy to discuss those an hour later, whatever you prefer. Again, the rim text will be discussed at the end. So here are revisions additions to the policy statements. These are the goals, objectives, and action items in the comprehensive plan. Generally, these are cleanup, reflect actual operations, or just change of responsible leads. In some cases, we're only changing the support column, which actually isn't in the comprehensive plan, it's something we use, but we're including it here as well. Same thing, there are too many details to describe, but showing there's some examples. If you have any questions from the application, I'd be happy to discuss those an hour later.
Any questions? Go ahead, Josh, or Brian?
So here's the thing I really want to talk about, the existing conditions report is the second item I'll be discussing with you tonight. The comprehensive plan is split into two documents. One is the comprehensive plan itself, which is forward thinking, what we want the city to be in the future. The other is the existing conditions report, which is what we are now. Both of these are required to meet state code. For the update, which generally occurs every three years, there's new photos, more photos, updated tables, new tables, new charts, and a reduction of oral text. Same number of pages, but a lot more graphics, basically. The infographic on this slide here is a summary of information from the ECR. Generally, the infographic focuses on Meridian, but if you actually look in the ECR, it compares us to Meridian, to Boise, Napa, Ada Canyon, County, Canyon County, Idaho, and the US as a whole. Again, I know you've seen this before, but... So here's some additional information related to education, jobs, pay, and play in Meridian. Actually had kind of a difficult time choosing what went on these. For example, you don't see anything on schools. If you actually look in the ECR, there's some pretty interesting data on enrollment if you're looking for trends. Be happy to discuss that sometime if you want.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Brian, for what it's worth, I think that's something that the whole council would value hearing a little more additional information on whether tonight or at a future council meeting. And again, I don't know where the council stands on that, but perhaps that might even be a beneficial joint meeting between us and, and the school board. That as we continue to grow, further collaboration, communication- That is, we continue to grow, further collaboration, communication with both bodies might make more sense.
I agree. So here are three trends that we found to be most interesting. Not all of these are bad. Some of these aren't even anything that local government really can or necessarily should have a role in, but they do impact us, so they're interesting. Poverty is lower in Meridian than elsewhere, but it's also climbing faster here than elsewhere, so something to watch. Meridian, like most cities, is aging. There's twenty-something age group, however, appears to be decreasing as a percent of the whole. If you look at the chart, you can visually see that every year, every ten years, it's just gone down further and further. That is an educated and attractive workforce for employers that we're trying to attract. Lastly, housing is increasing as a percent of overall income. Most staggering is that almost fifty percent of renters, renting households are now spending thirty percent or more of their income on housing.
Brian? Sorry, Mr. President. Brian, can you go into that a little bit deeper? Because, I mean, when we look at this chart here in front of us, it shows that forty-nine percent of those that rent experience that, but only twenty-seven percent of them who own. I know that we have a lot more people who own homes than are renting a home or renting an apartment, so how did that number, how was that number derived?
Councilman Cavanagh, all of these numbers are from U.S. Census Bureau information. This data here is from several years of both the census information and the American Community Survey, which is what used to be the long form. Those are directly from census information, so there wasn't, there's not, maybe I don't understand your question, those are pretty much straight from their information, so there's no...
There's not a formula?
There's no twisting here.
Just trying to figure out where the fifty percent number comes from.
So the fifty percent is just for renters, so fifty percent of households that rent only.
Right, okay. Maybe I misread your point. Sorry, Mr. President.
I'm missing a slot, oh, there it is. Lastly, here are some additional items to consider that we're requesting you consider tonight. Most of these were proposed after the application was submitted. Things take time, that was three or four months ago now, when I originally submitted that. The first one is to change all occurrences within the text and the policy statements from the wastewater treatment plant to the wastewater resource recovery facility. That makes sense to call it that, if you're spending a lot of money on it, it's not just something you throw away, you try to use it. For policy item 50503A, when I submitted this application originally, Public Works requested that we make the priority on this low. Subsequently, and after we submitted the application, legal and SWAC requested that we bumped that back up to medium. We talked back to Public Works on that some more and they agreed, so while the original application suggested putting that to low, we're asking that you leave it at medium, but you can keep the rest of the changes proposed there. Green underlined is proposed and red strike through is removed. Lastly, and I don't know anyone that ever actually know this, but when I submitted the application, the day after parks, it gave some additional acreage information, I've included that in the draft form of the existing conditions report, so what you see is reflective of what we actually have, but I did change it from the first day when we actually submitted the application with that new information, so... With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions or have a conversation. I would love to hear some suggestions for improvement.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Any other staff going to report?
Mr. President, members of the council, Caleb Hood, for part two, as Brian kind of presented in his opening remarks. Before I get into the details of my section of this report, I just want to give you a little bit of background and history and how we kind of got to here, particularly again regarding my sections, the north and the south rims, that we're proposing for the comprehensive plan. So, as you all know, we were, you've had the Southern Rim Coalition before you for various public hearings over the past several months, this past year, and the outcome of a lot of that was direction from you all to work with them on considering some of their requests. So we've done that in the past several months, essentially the heart of their, and I know they're here, so they can tell you their real mission, but the way that I kind of understand it, I'm going to couch it to you right now, is that the heart of their request is to treat the rim as an asset, and therefore then, my job would be to develop some policies around that that reflect that as an asset for the city. So that's what we've tried to do in the subject text amendment. The text is a result of coordination, communication with coalition representatives. I put compromise in parentheses there. I don't think this is the end game for the coalition. Again, I know they're here, they can tell you for themselves what they think, but just based on that back and forth, if they had their druthers, it wouldn't read the way it does now. It was finding that line of what we were comfortable with at staff proposing to you all and piggybacking it on everything Brian just told you, those administrative type of changes. We didn't want to cross that line of having to do public outreach and new policies that we thought were far-reaching and, again, went to that level of really engaging stakeholders. Now, in retrospect, after receiving a letter from the BCA, should have done, yeah, I think we probably should have done that. But that's what we were trying to do kind of initially with our, in our working with the coalition, is allow them to piggyback instead of having them submit their own standalone application. And we did talk to them about that. We said, this is what we're comfortable, piggybacking on our application. If you want to do something on your behalf, and that's still an option for them, submit your own text and/or map amendment. So, just a little bit of that, and then just one other thing in the notes, just some of that direction that are received, and I won't, it wasn't direct direction, I mean, it wasn't staff go and do this right now, but the feeling, the flavor I got from council largely was we need more opportunities for more estate lots in Meridian, and again, particularly looking at the rim as an asset where that would be appropriate to evaluate. So again, that's what we tried to do. I also want to take just a minute and explain further what the comp plan is and does, and largely how it works within the context of community development. So I know you all know this, but I just want this to be on the record. The comp plan is not code or blueprint, it is a guide. We use the comp plan as staff and as elected officials to determine appropriateness and intent of a project. Does a project comply with the intent of a land use plan, the applicable policies, and what is going on in the area? It doesn't consider all cases. It is, you know, the policies contained in the plan are vast, cover several different aspects, and are not parcel-specific. So why these policy statements, we do believe, have value and worth, again, they're not code, and they're not, explicit compliance isn't required as we look at doing development reviews. So just kind of that level, that's where we're at. I just want to keep you up there, you had discussions earlier this evening from Brighton about the UDC text amendments. That is code, that is explicit compliance. Those are, you know, again, black and white terms that need to be complied with through a process, and the comp plan is our guide. So with that being said, getting into what we're proposing, and I have a handout as well, it's not as pretty as Brian's eleven-by-seventeen, and I apologize for that, but I do want to just give you a summary. I've got a handful, I don't want to say several and scare you. I've got a series of slides here, but I've copied three of my slides, just so you can have them kind of there as we run through things, you can use this as a cross-reference. I'm going to give those to the clerk now. And again, what you're going to have, it isn't anything new, it's a copy of those slides, and this is the first one, so you have it. So these, this is the first of two pages of what we're proposing as changes regarding to the rim properties. I think... So let me, let me jump in. So the first bullet, this text removes the density step allowance within the rim areas. So as you all are known and are familiar with, we do allow a step up or down for most residentially designated properties within the city. So you get requests for properties sometime designated low density and they want to step up to a medium density, or vice versa. Maybe they're medium and they want to develop at low, or medium to high. What we're proposing in this first bullet, in part, is that if you're within this area, and I'll show you a map here in a second, if you're within this area, you are not eligible for a step. If you're low, you're low. You can't ask for a medium. Just a quick aside, I'll be back before you here soon to talk about the new comprehensive plan for Meridian. A lot of the consternation we hear and frustration we hear from the general public and adjacent neighbors has to do with the step, and I think we take a serious look at that. When we develop a new comp plan, do we continue to allow a step within our comp plan, again, like I just mentioned, low to high, medium to, or low to medium, medium to high, high to, high to medium, or not? I think that's something that needs to be vetted, and I'm not saying let's change that now, I'm just, just, again, a lot of the things that we hear people say is, we looked at your map and it was low, we're expecting low. How are you allowing them to develop to medium? Well, we have this caveat in our comp plan that says that flexibility. Just another quick, just to bell on that a little bit more. Low-density residential, and again, I know you all know this, but if I can continue to beat it into you, low, zero to three dwelling units per acre, that's a pretty good range. Zero dwelling units, which doesn't, you don't do, to three, pretty good range. The next step is three to eight. So essentially, if you're low, you can develop up to eight. Zero to eight is a huge, that's everything. You can do apartments largely. What kind of guarantee or assurance are there for neighbors that look at a map and say low, and somebody comes in with six dwelling units per acre? Again, I'm just, I'm sort of reflecting what I'm hearing from our community, so, but I should probably move on to this now. And just with that thought here, I think that was some of why we were comfortable saying, hey, in this area, you can't step up or down, it's, you are what you are on the map. But again, that needs to be vetted further. I will also just clarify, if approved, the way we've got it tonight, nothing would prohibit a developer from requesting a map amendment. So if you're low and you want medium, instead of a step, you ask for a comp plan map change and you change the map to medium. So nothing we do tonight would prohibit anybody from asking for a different designation. So I just wanted that to be, to be clear, too. So to clarify, though, this change limits a step for all residentially designated properties, and we'll get into that a little bit more, and that's not to be confused with the third bullet on this, which only applies to low density. So if you're medium, again, the example of medium to high, and you're in the rim, and there's one example of that in the northern rim area, and I'll get to that in a second, I have a couple of exhibits that will show you that would apply, so... And just one final thing on the step, it's not a given. We do request that the applicant provide justification for the step. If you're designated low on our map and you're wanting to develop at medium density, why? What is the reason that low doesn't work? Market forces, adjacent properties, what's going on that says you got it wrong, city, it shouldn't be low, it should be medium, or medium-high, so... And again, you all have that discretion, too, and have to concur with that step, allowing that step, that it's appropriate on a case-by-case basis. So that's really kind of the first, I guess I should point this out to you, the text, it's the first time in the comp plan that you see the words "south rim" and "north rim", rather than just describing it, the area near Spurwing, north of Chindon, as you see in the last bullet. So really, in the first bullet, we have this new phrase called north, or new areas, north rim and south rim areas, so that's the first bullet. Is there any questions on that one? Now I saw you moving my mic, so I thought maybe you...
Mr. President.
Palmer?
Mr. President and Caleb, I noticed in the second and third bullet points, going to your point that it's, it's not code, that this is a guide, that the software language, such as the words "should"...
Right.
...are used in the second and third bullet point, but in the first, it says where no step up is allowed. I'm wondering if it would be better to soften that language, to say where there should be no step up, or no step up is recommended, or instead of black and white to anybody who might read it and feel like it's code, where it's saying, no, it says not allowed.
Mr. President.
It was just something to think about and maybe notice.
Mr. President, Councilmember Palmer, I like it, and I do think that is consistent with, again, the intent of, there aren't, I didn't do a word search, I do not believe there are any shals in the comp plan. And that's right to my point, the comp plan is a guide, and we, and this would say you couldn't, you couldn't apply, and your application don't even ask. So I do like that. You know, to speak out of the other side of my mouth, I like, I like where you're going with that, but this one, to actually have it be black and white, that you're, the way to get there is to do a map amendment, it's not a step. We won't, as staff, there's no discretion in that, it's either, this is either a, you can or you can't. Some of these other things that we, and I'll get into this a little bit, it's subjective. Some of these other things that we'll talk about, do you comply or not? Eh, I may think you do, the next person may think you don't. So that's, a lot of the policies we have in our comp plan are, again, subjective type of policies, but I'm open to what you suggested.
Mr. President. Mr. President, Caleb, so if this were to be as it is here, and someone were to apply for a step up in the north or south rim area, would staff then say, no, you're not allowed to do that per the comp plan?
Correct.
Don't bother, you're not allowed to apply to council?
Correct.
So it's code, but it's not code?
I don't know a better way to phrase it. It's not code, but...
Essentially, maybe clarify it this way, if we put that in there, you're assuming that council is saying, don't let anybody bring that to us if they try. Even though it's not code, council has told us through the comp plan, you're not allowed to apply for a step up.
Mr. President, here's maybe a better way to put that. If someone applied in their application, even though maybe in their narrative they didn't mention it, but let's say they were low, and we look at their project and they have four dwelling units per acre, and we say, oh, you're, you're essentially requesting a step up, we would either condition it that they remove some lots to get below that, or not process the application if we found, you know, we found that discrepancy in time. Largely, what we'd say if in their application, they said, we're requesting to go from, you know, zero to three to five, we would probably push their application back and say, we can't process that. If they really pressed and said, process our application, we would, but it'd probably be a recommendation for denial, or again, remove lots. So, yes, it's direction from council, and if you want to word that differently, but I would like, this is one where less is, less discretion is more. I don't want to be, sometimes we'll do a step and sometimes we won't, so it is more clear, it's clear.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Mr. President.
Mr. Board.
There's a path to do what Councilman Palmer's saying. If this change were to go forward, the direction would be you remove lots or you add a complaint amendment to your application.
Right.
And then rather than staff having to step up, in-house discretion to process the application, the council decision. You're right?
Mr. President, that's a, that's a better way to state it, I think. Yes, there is, there is still a path forward to process that application. Can we still, whether you call it a step or a comp plan map change, you still have to justify it. There still has to be, it's a little bit different process if you're proposing a map amendment, there's different findings we have to make. But yes, we could still get the right project, if it's the right project, we could still get them to yes.
Mr. Bird? Mr. Bird?
Mr. Bird, members of the council, I could also help provide maybe a little bit of context on why that was originally put into the comp plan back in 2001 and 2002. So back then, the state law did not allow the comp plan to be amended, the text could be amended, but the map couldn't be amended except twice a year. And so at the time, the city would bundle all of those comp plan amendments to one, one particular point in time, process it through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then bring it to the council. And we felt it was a very cumbersome process to do when it was a change from a low to medium or a medium to high. And so that was the reason that was put in the, in the comp plan originally, was to allow that one step without requiring a comp plan amendment, which could potentially, in theory, we may have already just done a comp plan amendment, which means it'd be six months till we could do it again. So the code was very, very restrictive that way, so that was the reason that was put in there. The state code is not as restrictive any longer to doing comp plan amendments, both text as well as map amendments. So you don't have that restriction that existed fifteen years ago, and that was the basis for the reasons for that was, that was allowed that way. So, again, I know that's not the focus of what you're talking about tonight, but I thought it would help provide a little context as to why did we, why did we ever do that? And if we want to change it, what would that result? Again, we have a lot easier method in changing the comp plan today than we did fifteen years ago, and so that's really the context of why that code was written and the comp plan was written that way back then.
So, Mr. President, moving right along then, to the second, to the second bullet real quick, and Councilman Palmer actually hit on it already and picked up on it, that it should. So this, this statement really sets the context for the additional policy statements that you see in the second page of your, the handout that I gave you, and then two, two more slides, so the goals and objectives, which I'll get to in just a minute. So this is meant, this statement is meant to encourage developers to think about the rim as an rim as an asset and lay out their project appropriately. Uh, we don't have really any way to enforce this, but we will ask the developer to explain how they are complying or meeting the intent of this, this policy statement. So, a- again, this is one of those, um, maximize, or what is, should be oriented in design. Okay, there's, there's some subjectivity there. Um, finally, the third bullet, then. Um, right now, again, all residential uses north of Chindon and within a quarter-mile of the rim or, or the Phyllis Canal are limited to one-half to one-acre, um, lots. So really, a maximum of two dwelling units per acre, not ex, you know, that excludes roads and other things. So really, if they're half-acre lots, you aren't getting, you know, two dwelling units per acre, because you gotta cut out roads and if you have other amenities and things. So it's, it's really not a net two. Um, they're half-acre to one-acre lots. Um, again, low-density residential, zero to three dwelling units per acre. So like Bullet One, there are real implications to real property, but I'll show you the extent of the impacts, um, as it applies to the number of properties this policy would apply to. Um, again, though, this is a should, not a shall type of statement. Um, staff evaluates projects for appropriateness on a case-by-case basis. If a lot or three were smaller than a half-acre and were budding urban lots, we might deem that design appropriate. But this is a good guiding statement for what we generally are expecting. So again, case-by-case, we, we want this to guide, be thinking about it, but it's not, it's not code. If you have one lot that's 21,000 square feet, just under a half-acre, doesn't mean we'll, we'll deny the project necessarily. Uh, the zoning code will control. Okay, so this is this, the, um, the, the next exhibit, sorry. This is meant just to show you what the text means or what it applies to, and I've got several more, several, handful, a couple few, uh, exhibits that show you more what this means, but I just want to kind of show you the extent. So again, quarter-mile each side of the top of the rim, um, north and south. So if we want to spend more time on that or come back, we can, but I've got some more that kind of show it. This is the second page of what I just handed out to you, again, so you can have it for quick reference if you need it. Um, what, what this is, um, is what we typically use in the planning department when we're evaluating applications. What we looked at, the first three bullets, sets the stage for these policy statements. These are the ones we typically, if you look at the ID number, those are the ones you'll see in your staff report. This is usually what we read and recite back to you and say, "Does a develop, does a development comply with this objective or this action item?" Um, so here are the new, uh, the first one is the objective, and the other three, the A, B, C, are the action items that feed the objective. So I'm not gonna sit here and read them to you. They're on, on your screen. Hopefully, you had a chance to read these beforehand, but these are, again, what staff will use, aside from the, the guiding documents we just talked about, and if someone applied for a step-up, we'd say, "I, you can't really do that here." Um, but this is what we'll cite in most of our staff reports when applicable. Four projects that are in, um, the north rim, south rim, and other notable vistas. We don't have any right now, but we just put that in there for other properties that may have similar, could be deemed similar assets. Um, these are things to, to consider. So again, I don't view any of these as too onerous, or it's something, again, really the intent is to get the blood flowing of the property owner developer to say, "Hey, do we have something here we can maximize as an asset that can make, that can preserve, provide that, that view corridor, um, going forward?" Um, so these policies just boil down, encourage, but don't require preserving view sheds, orienting development to make use of views, using open space to venet, benefit neighborhoods with views, and encourage open vision fencing to limit obscuring views. And these are all goals that which it's, are seeking to achieve with lots of options and examples for a variety of development types, from estate to high-density apartments. Most of this is actually regulated or required in the UDC. Uh, just to be clear, there isn't any pending UDC application or effort to update that, so, uh, it's already, uh, some of these things are already covered there, so. Unless there's any questions on that.
Questions? Councilmember Orton, Vice President, I don't know what we're calling you. Caleb, just a thought that has popped into my head as you presented some of this. Has it, at any places, it contemplated maybe a, uh, reduction in an open space requirement for these types of lots? Um, I just, seems to me you've got large lots with lots of space built in. That's why we have open space, and requiring a developer to come in with such a large requirement on top of that could be challenging. I'm just curious if that's been contemplated and if there's thoughts.
Yeah, um, it's a good question, uh, Councilman Kavanagh. And yes, so we, if, you may recall, it's been maybe 18 months ago or so, we did do a UDC text amendment. Um, I might get this slightly wrong, but I, I know I'm very, very close. For projects that have the average lot size of 16,000 square feet or more, so our, our current standard is 10% open space requirements for, for subdivisions of five acres or more. If you're doing a subdivision that has the average lot size of 16,000 square feet, we drop that in half to 5%. So it's still some open space, but there is a, a significant reduction for larger estate lots in open space. Happy to think about that further, but, uh, that was...
Appreciate that.
Predicated on a project up north Meridian by Chindon, kind of, um, so anyways, yeah, that reas, fairly recently changed in our code.
Mr. President?
Mr. and Miss Little Roberts?
Caleb, do we have any developers that are currently working on anything that they're considering a step-up or a step-down?
Um, Mr. President, Councilwoman Little Roberts, uh, uh, not quite sure how to answer that question. Yes, um, they are in process all the time. I don't recall, just off a menu of your agenda tonight, if anyone was, was asking for that, but we get that request quite frequently. As it relates to the north and south rim areas, though, I can't think of anybody that's requesting a step-up right now. Um, we have, and I'll get to this in a couple of slides, um, we have talked to a couple of property owners that have properties within that over, the south rim overlay area, um, but they aren't asking for a step. They're largely developing, consistent with what we're proposing here. Um, and I don't know if the, now is the right time, but I have a note about this, to some degree, talking about entitlements. If you have an application submitted right now and in process, these policies aren't retroactive to your application. It's what's on the books at the time of your application acceptance and processing. So, um, anything that's going through the process or recently improved or entitled, that's your entitlement. We don't say, "Never mind, we changed the rules, now you got a new game to play, you gotta develop to this." So a little bit more on that later, but did I answer your question okay?
Thank you.
Okay. So here's, here's the same exhibit that I showed after the first three bullets, but it's got our future land use map underneath it. Um, so lighter green color is our low-density residential. The yellow is medium-density residential. Um, again, just to largely show the scope, to clarify, we aren't proposing to add this overlay onto the actual future land use map. This is just an exhibit to show really what that looks like, but this wouldn't be something that goes over the top of our future land use map as a base layer. Um, so, and I mentioned previously, but, um, really, the impacts in north Meridian are largely between State Highway 16 and a quarter-mile west of Black Cat, because everything to the east of that is either Tree Farm, Spurwing, or already developed other county subdivisions. Um, so like we were just talking, this doesn't affect them, but there are a couple of properties, the, the low-density there, and the medium-density wouldn't be eligible for the step-up, so they couldn't ask for high. So there are some real impacts in that area, but, um, I don't envision somebody wanting to do more than what this would allow. I, but to be, to be fair, I haven't knocked on those doors of those three or four property owners to say, "Do you have any concerns?" Uh, so here, here it is with an aerial, kind of describing what I said, but again, Tree Farm is, is building out, so you don't see all of their, their phases and, um, their original development agreement and zoning that goes, um, to the west of Black Cat. Um, a lot, a lot of that...
Mr. President?
Is dealt.
Orton.
Caleb, a quick question. Looking at this map, what's the topographical reas, reason to cover the area below the Phyllis Canal or north of it that's literally not on the rim?
So, Mr. President, Commissioner, or Councilman Orton, um, Mr. Neri helped me out, uh, on the last one with some of the history on the step, and maybe he can, so i- i- if you reference what I handed out you, to you there, we're not proposing a new desert, we're changing a name, but that's how, currently how it reads. Why? I don't really know. Um, this dates back before my time, so I don't really know why it was, certainly the top of the rim, I understand. Below it, the river, maybe? I, I really don't know. Um, but this is, just to be clear, this isn't new policy for the, for the north rim, Spurwing, north of Chindon area. We're, we're changing the name, but if you look at the texts, in that third, whoops, sorry, I went the wrong way. On that third bullet, it, it already says north of Chindon and within a quarter-mile or less from the rim.
Right.
So, sorry, I don't have the, the history on all that. Uh, and then the, the next in this series, then, would again be the low-density underneath and you could, the overlay. Um, so again, this would affect those properties. Instead of that range being from zero to three, they could only develop up to half-acre lots in that area. Um, we already talked about entitlements. Um, but again, the underlying zoning controls. So after we get, after you get your annexation and zoning, the comp plan lar, the comp plan largely goes out of play. It's no longer relevant. You got your entitlements, and the zoning code is what controls how that property develops and the development agreement typically. Um, so stated a little, a, a, another way, but a little bit differently, comp plan policies developed after a property has developed don't really apply. So, again, the area, there's a three-quarters of a mile or so area, um, west of Black Cat, um, east of Highway 16, um, that is, doesn't have any entitlements in the city, and below the rim, but the policy's the same, low-density. Um, I think I kind of covered this already in those previous slides, just to blow up if you wanted to get any, into any more details of what that, what that looks like on any in particular property or, or areas. So we'll, we'll spend a little bit more time as you go through the south Meridian, um, properties. Um, largely, there's no, again, no change here to the current practice and policies of the city there. The south rim, though, uh, here it is, overlaid on our future land use map. Again, this isn't included on the map, but just meant to show you what that would look like. Um, here it is with the aerial version. Um, and then the aerial with the, the areas that we would say, "Nope, you're not zero to three anymore, you're half, up to half-acre lots" would be your cap. So I mentioned I had some blowups in the south Meridian. I, this isn't in my, my presentation, this is something I put together today, um, but I am gonna, I am gonna hand it out to you. I don't know how much time we'll actually spend on it, but I do want you to have it anyway, so just one second. And, and I did take some liberties with this, um, in the legend that you'll see, and I'll even just explain with what everybody can see on, on the screen here. Um, the difference between some of the yellow properties that are highlighted here, which, which, um, essentially is meant to represent part, part properties that, um, aren't subdivided properties in the county, um, largely carry high redevelopment potential. They're, they're, I don't want to say they're prime, but they are, you know, um, fairly ready for, for development. Um, and they would be, they would be subject to these policies, and again, I could see them, there being an impact to those properties. Now, that's not to say that the properties on Val Vista, uh, in Aspen Cove, Aerial Estates, some of these county subdivisions that are also on the screen wouldn't be impacted, but I've colored them on your map, kind of a more of an orange color with limited redevelopment potential. Do I think that those county one, two, and five-acre parcels will redevelop? Yes. Do I think they're gonna redevelop at medium-density, though? No. I think they're in that range of half-acre style, largely becau, for multiple reasons. I've talked to a lot, heard from a lot of those people, saying, "Either our CCNRs prohibit this, this is the, the way we want it to happen," but they see it happening over time, that there'll be lot splits, or maybe even three or four lots out of that, but I don't see this ra, you know, um, at least not in the 20-to-25-year horizon of the comp plan, transitioning to high-density, higher-density residential in this area, just because of the nature of this area. It is, there are several county subdivisions in here, and if any one person or one, one property owner came in and said, "Hey, I want to do eight dwelling units per acre," I, I don't think that would ever fly with you or the neighbor. So that's why, again, I've taken, is it possible? Yeah. You could do a comp plan map amendment, though. I don't, this is a largely developed, but with redevelopment potential in the city. So, again, take what I gave you with a grain of salt, that's just me, but it largely is also meant to show, um, you know, again, other, other properties that are already entier, entitled or developed out to show the impacts. So we have on the yellow are, my interpretation of those properties are more impacted, if you will, or these policies apply more directly to them than other parcels. Uh, so going forward, that's kind of how you'll see the, the map. So in this section, everything except for the red piece, and the red piece is highlighted red, not yellow, because that was part of the south Meridian annexation from a couple of years ago. So they do have zoning, but they don't really have any entitlements to develop. They're required to come back to you with their development plan, so they're kind of a little bit different story. But everything else on the screen here is either built or entitled, or not a low-density property. So, um, the redevelopment potential in this area for low-density just doesn't, it doesn't exist. And then this one, a- as we move a little bit south and east, there is certainly more and more larger parcels with more, in my opinion, redevelopment potential, um, that would, that are subject to, to the changes in the rim area tonight. Um, again, lo, large, larger pro, properties that haven't been subdivided in the county. So you can see, I'm not gonna call them all out there, you, but you can see them. Again, there's a fair number of properties there that, um, would be subject to, to changes. I'll also just point out here, um, in the middle of the screen, where Amity kind of gets dissected there, where a property is partially in, partially out, the future land use map is not parcel-specific. That's stated directly, like the guide, these designations don't follow property lines. They can float. I think you've heard that term before, and, and they, they aren't meant for one, this is this property's designation, and this one's that, but it's a general, generalization of that, that, uh, land use map. So there wouldn't be a hard line there, you know, all of a sudden, half-acre lots, and then you could ask for a step-up and do eight dwelling units per acre. We look for that transition. So I just wanted to call that out. Some properties are, um, more impacted than others, I just, you know, again, this, this one has a significant portion. Some of them only have, you know, a third or less of their land area that actually is within that quarter-mile defined rim area. So here's the last aerial that kind of brings it up. And again, as we get towards the Meridians portion of this rim, which essentially ends at Boise Ranch Golf Course, um, there certainly are some opportunities for redevelopment of properties out there where their designation is low-density right now, that, again, would be impacted by, um, the changes. So this is the other, this is the third page, for those of you in the audience, this is the third page. You, you essentially have seen everything they've seen except for the 11 by 17, but this is the third page on your thing that just summarizes for everybody what is proposed tonight. Um, removing the step for those areas, um, you can't go from, you know, a lot of people talk about low or R4, R2, to apartments without doing that, that map amendment we discussed. And then, again, for areas that all of the following three bullets apply, um, that density range, it's further restricted from zero to three, one to three, um, to one to half-acre lots. So that's it in a nutshell, and I'm sorry, it took a half hour or more to get to that one. I could summarize it in one slide, but I did feel it warranted, just some explanation, um, and the summary. So in closing, um, the, these changes were a collaboration, um, a back-and-forth with, uh, the coalition, um, to plant the seed or give a nod to this asset that is this, the southern rim. At least, that's kind of the, the vibe I was getting from, from council. Um, again, staff's understanding that doesn't accomplish ultimate goals of the south Meridian coalition, uh, kind of more to come on that. More changes would be necessary to, to, to truly preserve unique development opportunities in, in the south rim. Um, again, through our new comp plan or other direction you give tonight, uh, we would be happy to do that, but that does warrant, uh, more substantial stakeholder involvement, public involvement, um, and staff having the resources to dedicate towards that effort. Um, the other option, I think I alluded to this earlier, but the, the coalition or anyone else always has an op, uh, the, the option to submit their own application and run it through the process and staff review it. So we were trying to do something we thought was helpful, you know, on our, while we're going through the process. You got something, okay, piggyback on. Again, in retrospect, it, it doesn't seem like it was that simple. So, um, sorry, I just saw a typo, but, um, we did have a couple of letters. One, a letter of support from the Southern, uh, South Meridian Rim Coalition for the rim text. We did receive that letter prior to the P and Z meeting. Denise LaFever questioned at that, at the P and Z meeting, um, the public outreach, particularly in the North Rim area. And then since the, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we received a letter from, uh, Building Contractors Association of Southwest Idaho. You should have that letter in your packet, um, from last week. And then, um, ju, just maybe a minute on that before I, I allow Warren to speak for a second. Just in the letter, and I hope that came clear in my, um, my presentation tonight. We aren't proposing any future land use map changes. It is a text change only, so I just wanted to clarify that. And we didn't go to the BCA and I've, I've already kind of fessed up to that, not that. And again, in retrospect, we should have probably, but, um, but we haven't historically gone to them for these annual updates. I realize this isn't your typical annual update. There are real new policies in here. But if that's what you direct us to do, I'm, I'm happy to work with them and explain this to them and we can, we can play those scenarios out, so. But I, I do want to just make it clear, we weren't trying to skirt any requirements or do anything, you know, to try to slip anything by anyone. There is certainly nothing intentional. Yeah, so just with that being said, so. And then finally, um, in further conversation with Public Works, Warren wanted to just make a couple of, of comments, um, tonight on, on potential impacts if this is approved.
Stuart.
Okay. I guess it was already on. Council President, excuse me, members of the council. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about this potential, the, the impact that this particular change might have. And maybe some things that we might feel are, are appropriate from a public works standpoint. So we just completed a master plan, a sewer master plan for the city of Meridian that just barely finished a few months ago. And the densities that we used to develop that master plan, to size the lines and everything else, uh, were based on our, our comprehensive plan, our previous, you know, prior to these kind of changes or these densities. The densities that we utilize have a real impact on the viability of the sewer and water infrastructure in an area. It takes a certain number of connections per mile of pipe in order to pay for that infrastructures, maintenance and operation and ultimate replacement. If we don't have enough connections, and that's generally speaking around three dwelling units per acre. Then you can end up with a situation where other ratepayers may subsidize these low density lots. We haven't really had a chance to analyze this in detail and determine what the impacts that might have. And also maybe provide recommendations for mitigating those impacts to other ratepayers. So I, I know that you, you might be inclined to make a decision tonight. That's certainly your, your prerogative, but I think from our perspective, we would appreciate just a little bit more time to, to look at the impact that this may have on the Public Works Department and the infrastructure. And make sure that we can make adjustments either to our planning. Maybe we don't need line sizes that are as big if the densities go down and so forth. Before we, we haven't got comfortable with this yet, so I'd just leave that with you.
Any questions for Warren? Any questions for Caleb?
So Mr. President, that ties right into the last slide, which are your options. So as, as Warren said, you, you know, we've, we've laid out the options and there may be sub options within this, but you can approve everything we've submitted. Approve just what Brian presented to you tonight, kind of more of the administrative changes and table the rim changes. What the parentheses really means there is some direction from you. If you table it for three months, what's the expectation? Or should we do this as, as a bigger comp plan update process? And we've talked about that before, this being a specific subcommittee type of level thing in that new comp plan. One of the six or seven steering committee type things that look at, at there. But again, if that's, if you choose option B, um, some, some suggestions or a date certain of when you expect us to come back with recommendations and kind of what you, just some general guidance overall. C would be, again, approve, propose changes with speci, any specific revisions, if we want to change a shall do should or something like that. Or again, you can, you can delay or deny all changes if certainly those. So we tried to kind of summarize your options at this point. The administrative changes, you know, as Brian presented them to you, we, we can go on doing our business without those, but it certainly is cleaner and easier if, if we at least get the administrative changes, um, approved this evening. So we can, um, have the most, you know, accurate plan for the community going forward, at least for another year or two, till we get a new one, so. Is that, Mr. President, I'm sorry for the long presentation, um, but I wanted to make sure I covered everything, so.
This is a public hearing, so council, we will.
Mr. President, question for Caleb, I guess, before you have it. Caleb, is this the first time that the city has proposed, I guess, not allowing a step change? I mean, this seems a little bit like foreign territory, but I, I guess I just don't know if I've, I've missed if we've done this in another part of town.
No, I'm, I'm, Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh, not wholesale or any one specific area where we say, hey, all the rules apply except for this one to you. I was just gonna go back to, to the way the policy currently reads. So. Yeah, so we have, if you look on the first, your first handout, the first bullet, we, we, it doesn't apply to the area bound by Canada, Chindon, McDermott and Eustick Roads, the Fields area. Or within the 10 mile interchange specific area. So yes, we do have two other areas where that step. We, we don't, we wouldn't process an application without a comp plan map change. So not new territory, it's the third territory.
Any other questions? Uh, we'll, uh, see if anybody from the public wanted to testify.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have three signups, so I'll begin with Denise Hanson LaFever, who wishes to testify.
Hello, I, um, Denise Hanson LaFever at 6706 North Selvia Way. Like to address the council concerning this. I, I did have a chance to spend time with, um, Brian. And I thought Caleb did a really good job on summarizing the North and the South Rim. As far as the administrative changes, I'm okay with that. That's not even an issue, you know, that, that's fine with me. I don't have anything to say about that. But the North and the South Rim, um, I am very concerned about those changes. And I'd like to clarify that I'm not only just concerned about the North Rim changes, I'm concerned about the South Rim changes. And I'd like to explain why. Uh, one is I think it's great that the South, um, Meridian Coalition wants to preserve the rim and, and that's wonderful. But what I'm concerned about is the level of outreach and the, the ability for the public to comment on these changes. This did have an, this does have an impact on the ability to develop and the, and the particular property owners' rights. And that's what it comes down to, is property owners' rights. And, uh, you know, on living in the spur ring area. This, the changes here kind of watered down what was there already. Before it was really clear that it was a quarter mile. There's nowhere in here that says those lines that are drawn on that map is a quarter mile. You know, it was really clear that we wanted to keep the, from the east of the, um, the compatibility to the east of this, the spur wing. That was clearly in there. You know, in here, there was no shoulds. It was a half acre to an acre. There's not these shoulds that are in here. Throughout here now, there's these shoulds in here. So, you know, I'd like to see either the changes for the North Rim, the language that was there that was developed. And if it's my understanding, and I may be wrong, but you know, this is a pretty lengthy process that they go through to develop the City of Meridian Comprehensive Plan. And this North Rim was part of that. And that's what the people decided. That's what a lot of people got together and a lot of input decided on that language. So to go back and have a staff-led objective without having the people make those decisions on that change, I'm just not comfortable with. And as far as the South Rim goes, although I really do understand them wanting to keep their asset and preserve that. I'm very concerned that the property owners, and it's right there in the staff area, that they're disallowing a step up, which impacts their ability to develop that land. And, and those people that you can specifically identify on the map who they were, haven't had a chance to come forward through the process, through neighborhood meetings, postings, coming to testify. They haven't had that opportunity to either be okay with it or object to it. And same with the developers, not all the developers were contacted if they were okay with it or not okay with it. So what I'm asking at this point is either deny it in total or go back through and set this aside and give it several months to go back through and get that out, outreach. Or to go back through and actually do it through the comprehensive plan adjustment. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Thank you.
Next on the list is Susan Carnes, who wishes to testify.
Kathy Baumgartner, 2310 East Lake Hazel Road, Meridian. Want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today, uh, with regard to the Meridian Southern Rim Coalition. On behalf of them, uh, we want to express our support for staff's recommendation with respect to the administrative changes to the comprehensive plan, um, as they pertain to the South Rim that's before you tonight. I want to make one point that I think the council needs to, to be clear. That this, the changes to the, the, the text changes that are proposed tonight are only applicable to low density. Those, that, those areas that are already designated as low density. So we're not taking away property owner rights. We're simply, um, allowing the, the property owners along the, the South Rim to have the same type of protections that are in place for the, for the North Rim. And it's only applicable to low density. It also does not apply to current applications. So no, none of the developers that currently have applications in play will be affected. And we believe that, you know, that the breadth of the proposed amendments that we had proposed to staff were substantially, um, more significant than these. And we had hoped to be able to, to integrate those immediately because of the, the rapid development that's occurring right now. And I understand from, uh, from the council that there is an intent to, to revisit the comprehensive plan and the flume. But that's, as we say, is a very lengthy process. And in the meantime, all of the land that is out there is being eaten up, uh, without any consideration whatsoever for the asset that that, that particular, uh, Southern Rim represents for the city. And so I think it's critical that, that we make, at least make an effort to recognize and acknowledge the fact that the South Rim has not had any representation whatsoever with respect to the comp plan in the original, in the, when it was originally drafted. So that's, that was our effort. I think the staff has done a very good job to, um, to be able to put some language in place that falls within the restricted, within the restrictions and within, um, the, the purview of, of what can be changed in an annual review without, um, a lengthy comp plan change. And there, you know, public hearing, I'm sorry, uh, excuse me, uh, public notices have been sent out. And we, we believe that there has not been any other comment. And BCA had an opportunity to provide comment prior to this and failed to do so other than to, to request a, a delay. And we would, we would propose that these, the staff's recommend, recommendation be approved and move forward. And, uh, we look forward to, as a Southern Rim Coalition, look forward to the opportunity before you, to come before you again, with more substantial proposed amendments throughout the process, through the appropriate process of, um, a comprehensive plan change and, and addressing the flume issues. So, um, that I propose you approve it and, uh, and if you have any questions, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
Maybe not questions, maybe a couple of corrections. There's a couple of points where use the words no consideration whatsoever has been given with, with regard to the, the asset of the Southern Rim. The last two projects that have been proposed and have been before us that your organization has come in, in protest of were denied. You had mentioned BCA and they're, they're not submitting comment. They weren't informed of tonight's issue until just recently. And so that, that's their request for the, the months of delay. But I just wanted to offer those couple of points that, that this council has given extensive consideration to the asset of the Southern Rim and projects that have been brought before us over the last several months.
President Byrd, Councilwoman Palmer, um, in response to that, I, my, my intent was to say with respect to the comprehensive plan, there was, there was specific, the, the knee, or the, uh, the, the North Rim was specifically addressed in the comprehensive plan. And there was nothing in the comprehensive plan specific to the South Rim. That's what I was, that's, that's what I was referring to. I wasn't referring to any active applications because that would be inappropriate for us to talk about at this point. So, um, I, and with respect to, to public notice, um, you know, I, I don't know what, I guess, I, you know, I apologize if I, if I'm not as well versed on what the public notice requirements are for, for this annual text amendment change. My assumption is that, that we've all as citizens and special interest groups have all had the same notice and the same opportunity, uh, to review those changes. So I think it's, it's equitable. I'm just not exactly sure what the process has been, but my assumption is that it's, um, that special interest groups have gotten, have not received any more notice than the general public. So I think it's important that, um, that staff, you realize that staff has spent a considerable amount of time on this. And it is, it isn't perfect. It isn't ideal. It doesn't represent the desires or the needs of the citizens in South, in the South Rim. But it's a compromise. And, and I appreciate that, I appreciate staff's efforts on this to, to come up with something that, um, is a step in the right direction. It certainly does not, um, it certainly does not address the need and address the concerns that citizens have, um, with respect to, you know, the, the expectation that when they see a low density designation on the map, that there will be low density development. And citizens are, are rising up and they're concerned because they feel like they've been, you know, given a bait, bait and switch with this, this beautiful flume that designates low density in their areas. And they're drawn to those. And then, then there's, you know, a developer comes through and immediately requests a step up. And the citizens are not, um, are not, are not, are feeling that their, their needs are not being addressed. And, and I believe that, you know, the one point in the amendment where it says that the, the North and South Rims are not allowed a step up, I, I can see how that could be controversial. But at this point, all the developer needs to do is simply ask for it and, and in many, many cases, it is approved. And this allows for a little bit, a, a, a little bit higher threshold with respect to a step up along the rim, which represents a, a different type of, of, of land. A different type of developments appropriate for that land when, when we're talking about a rim. When we're talking about flat farmland without any views of the, of the Boise foothills and the, and the Oihees. Okay, the, a step up, a step up is most likely appropriate. But you have to take into consideration that the asset sits before the city. And if you don't protect it, it, it's gonna become just like every other piece of flat farmland with no, with no differentiation. And therefore, no opportunity for diversity in housing that this particular piece of property allows this city to, to enjoy. And so that's what we're about. We're trying to protect the, the asset that city has before them to enable the city to provide the kind of, of diversity in housing that, that citizens are, are clamoring for. And we can't find because there's such a, a, a boom in development that developers want to have the opportunity to maximize their density without regard for the long-term impact that that's gonna have on this city and the city's strength long-term. and the city's strength long-term. So that's where, that's our motivation, that's our desire, and that's why we want to come before you in the full process of reviewing the comp plan and reviewing the flume, and have these kinds of discussions in much more depth, which is appropriate. But at this point, this was an opportunity to at least make one small step toward putting in place some language that would address the desires of the citizens of South Meridian. And that's what we're after. I'm hoping, you gave me an awful long time to respond, so I hope that was, you know, was appropriate in terms of the response to your question or your point.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Finally, on the list, we have Dave Jorgensen, who wishes to testify.
Mr. Jorgensen, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Been a long time since we've seen you here.
Thank you, good to see you tonight. For the record, my name's Dave Jorgensen, the Government Affairs Representative for the Building Contractors Association of Southwestern Idaho, and my address is 14254 West Pattonburg Drive in Boise. And again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We did submit a letter for your packet for your consideration. A quick summary, and then I'll answer any questions you have. First, as I had the opportunity to talk to Caleb yesterday, late at the end of the day, to have a little further understanding of what is being presented, we do not have any opposition to the administrative changes that are being brought forth to you. Our number-one concern, our primary concern, is the addition of a South-North Rim planning area to your comprehensive plan. The way I learned about it was at a Builder-Developer Council meeting not too many days ago, a couple weeks ago maybe, where one of our members brought it to my attention. This was recently gone forward, and they said this is going to affect them, their business, and some application work that they're working on. I don't know if it's been submitted yet or not, I don't believe it is, but I don't know that for sure. I just know that, as well, some other members of our association have also currently own land, and have expressed concern that it would also affect them in their ability to develop going forward. So with these couple of members who've brought that concern, which is what precipitated the letter that was brought forth to you, I have worked with numerous cities in the area, I've worked with City of Meridian quite a bit. You have outstanding staff here, I think you know that. I think it might have just been a mistake, an oversight, maybe a realization that this was a larger policy change than what was maybe anticipated. But when you do add planning areas to your comp plan, that is, in our opinion, a little more significant of a change. Having said that, as I try to dive in quickly and look at the policy statements and the goals that were written, based on my experience as a land developer in this valley, both in the Boise foothills, as well as throughout the City of Eagle with lots of large lot developments, where large lots, large open spaces, transitional lots are all of concern at nearly every application ever done, again, the last 20 years I've been developing in Eagle, those are very contentious things. And I'm aware of the issues or concerns that are brought forth on both sides, both existing residents, the opposition, as well as an applicant. So as I read these policy statements, I thought, oh, I can see actually greater problems being created, and maybe not so much solving some of the problems that the neighbors currently show. And so our request is to table this portion of your application tonight so that it can be more thoroughly vetted. We're offering our assistance to work with staff to try to vet through those issues. So that's our request tonight. I could go through more examples if you'd like, it's a long night, I'll stop there and stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for David?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Mr. Jorgensen, your organization's requesting a three-month delay. BCA is an organization of considerable means and talented individuals. Can you share why a request for 90 days is being requested?
Sure, Mr. President, Councilmember Cavanagh. We recognize the holidays are not very far away, so I'm not sure how long it would take to pull together some meetings, pull together some resources, not only staff, but the others, landowners who may also need to be participants. I think a proper vetting of just, not just one shot at it, but make sure there's a significant or reasonable outreach to those landowners who are affected. So having said that, primarily due to the holidays, make sure there's enough time, then renotice. I'm just taking a shot at it. I don't know if it really needs that much time, frankly, but due to the holidays, I think it would be appropriate to make sure it goes to the next year.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, if I could just add, it's not an intent to stall and delay, it really is intent to work through and work through some concerns. Thank you.
David? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else, anybody in the public like to testify? Mr. Turnbull.
Mr. President, members of the council, name an address, or is that required? Okay, David Turnbull, 12601 West Explorer Drive in Boise. I came here for a little project about three hours ago, but then was apprised of this item on the agenda by David out in the hallway, so I thought it might not be a bad idea to stay and listen to the presentation. I come as surprised to you that I may have property that's affected by both of these rim designations. So I do have some concerns, and I do share the view that this needs to be at least deferred for some further vetting by the stakeholders involved. I do have, and I don't need to go through all of these, I kind of agree with Warren, I don't know that a one-acre designation, half to one-acre designation, is really in the best interests of the city anywhere. Cities are built for, you know, providing urban services. So I think that's one of the things. The whole clause about the view sheds and planning to retain view sheds, to me, seemed very problematic. I don't even know what that means, to tell you the truth, and I think it's language that may just set up, you know, be a recipe for arguments. And I'm not sure that I've ever experienced a city trying to put a policy in place that gives a prescriptive easement or a prescriptive right for the benefit of one property owner over somebody else's property. So I think that's problematic from our point of view. So I don't want to go along and belabor that any further, I would just concur with Mr. Jorgensen that I think this is at least prime for a deferral for three months, and perhaps ought to be incorporated into a larger comp plan amendment that I understand is somewhere in the works. So I appreciate that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Turnbull? Thanks, David. Anybody else in the public like to testify? This is a public hearing.
Mr. President, if I can, just to address some of the concerns that are brought up, and certainly not all of them, but in particular, the noticing that was done for this project was done in accord with both city code and state code for applications of this type. When notice is required to 200 or more property owners, and again, we're talking text that applies citywide, we don't send letters or postcards to 30,000 residents telling them this. However, that being said, we did do public service announcements, and we did put it in the local newspaper, as well as CJ mentioned today, I think 19,000 people that are subscribed on Next Door. So there was outreach done. Now, was it done to special interest groups and that? No, we've already talked about that, but we did the notice that's required for an application of this type. Just another point of clarification, and I'll leave it at that, but I did talk to John Wardle about these as well, because I knew the Brighton had some properties, particularly in the north and the south, we worked with them on that. So I did discuss that with Mr. Wardle two or three weeks ago, so just, not saying that that doesn't mean we shouldn't continue this out, I just wanted to let you know that I did talk to Brighton Corporation about it, not Mr. Turnbull in particular, but some reaching out. And just to that point that the Southern Rim Coalition brought up, we did provide them a little more notice because they were part of this, so we did tell them, hey, we submitted the application, P&amp;Z hearings to this date, but did we go any farther than that? Well, you might have to ask Brian, because I know he's been in contact, but no, we didn't do really anything more than that. So again, just some clarifications on what we did or didn't do in the last three, four months, so.
Any questions? Staff or anybody?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Little.
Warren, what type of time period would you feel would be helpful to vet out regarding costs and estimates and things like that?
So, a number of years ago, when we did the South Meridian Plan for this area out here, and we were talking about densities as we approached the City of Kuna, and there were some designations out there for estate-type densities. We had, we had a consultant look at, for us, the breakdown of costs for operation, maintenance, ongoing replacement, and so forth, that it would, and we determined at that time that it was approximately three dwelling units per acre to break even, you know, basically for people to support the infrastructure that it would take to serve that area at those kind of densities. We'd have to go back and take another look at that. I don't know exactly how long that'd take. We would look at that, and also look at the master plan, what the impacts are on the master plan, see if there's going to be any impacts on sizes, capacity, things like that on the master plan. So I'm thinking that by the time we work through all those issues, and also, if we are to serve densities that are less than the three dwelling units per acre, say, half or one-acre lots, with city infrastructure, how do we mitigate for the fact that they really don't pay for the infrastructure that it takes to support them? Unless we have some way of sharing that cost. One thing that comes to mind, and I'm not suggesting this is the most viable or the only one, but a tiered rate structure, something like that. But I don't know what those issues and solutions are without really looking into it. So I think the, you know, three-month timeframe is not unrealistic, but...
Thank you.
Any other questions or statements?
Mr. President.
Mr. Morton.
Just some statements. I think one of the many benefits of the comprehensive plan, map and text, is the vetting and input that goes into making it and updating it, I think it's critical. I think what the Southern Rim Coalition has provided is invaluable as part of that puzzle. And not only do homeowners want to be able to rely upon it, and, you know, current and future ones be able to rely upon it, but our development community needs to know that as well, that it's a consistent message of what's expected, for better or for worse, so they can then make their decisions, and everyone goes into these things with their eyes wide open. But it takes everybody providing input. I think that's critical, and it doesn't, for me, it doesn't really matter who or why noticed, was or wasn't responded to as quick as it could have been or should have been. You know, we're all here now, and we've got an opportunity to continue this process. The input from the coalition is, I think, is very valuable. I do want to hear what our city staff is talking about, some service concerns that may or may not exist but needs to be vetted, seems wholly appropriate to get that information. It may or may not change any of these recommendations. Same with input from the BCA. Absolutely appropriate, it may or may not change any of the recommendations, but value of this plan is when the input is gathered from all of these different components, and it's all balanced against each other, then we make a decision, and everyone's participated, and we can feel comfortable sticking to the plan. I know it's not necessarily binding, but I like the comprehensive plan, though not technically code, to really give a clear direction for the benefit of our citizens and our builders and developers to know what's expected. And if it's the intent to make a change like this, then let's let everybody know. But the first part is to get all the input from all stakeholders, and I think it is, I don't know how you do it before 90 days. I'd love to get an update on how that outreach and analysis is going in 60 days, 45 days, some sort of update. I don't anticipate you'd have it finished, but you're probably well into mid to late January with the holidays, if not February 1, to really bring back the northern and southern rim proposals, as they may be amended from that process. The administrative changes seem to make sense and are somewhat carved out in this presentation, and everyone has reviewed and at least seems to feel comfortable with those, and we can act on those going forward. But to Caleb's presentation and kind of options of next steps, which are very helpful, it makes sense that as much value as we see from the input from the Southern Rim Coalition and whoever else has had ample opportunity to participate, that our city staff and the BCA and those developers and landowners we know for sure own property in these two areas, get some specific outreach and input. May or may not change the recommendations come February 1, but with everyone having participation, feel a lot more comfortable with it.
Palmer.
Mr. President, a few comments, and then I'll make a motion. In addition to all the reasons for a several-month delay, I'd add that here next month, we have the potential for the replacement of a third of our existing city council. And this is a large enough change that we're all going to be affected by that for the next few years, that having the potential new councilman's input into what's going to affect them doing their job, I think would be valuable, in addition to the possibility, hopefully, of having a new director at community development, providing us additional opportunities for expertise. I think it makes sense for us to approve the changes that nobody's objecting to, and table or continue the discussion on February 6 for the rim issues. So with that, I would move, I move that we approve...
We got to close, if we're going to do this, we got to close the public hearing.
Move, we close the public hearing.
Or you can, or you can continue, or you can continue the public hearing February 6 completely, unless you want to specifically approve that one section. I, I think, if we're going to vent everything, I think we need to vent the whole application myself. Thank God I'll be gone a month for February 6.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I would agree with you, I would be favorable towards leaving the public hearing open for the entire piece, asking for feedback from stakeholders on the entire, I guess, application text amendment. I tend to agree with Councilmember Palmer and Councilmember Burton on the necessity to continue this a little further. I guess I would also ask, though, that perhaps maybe that last meeting of the year, we provide with a status update as to the progress that's being made. I know oftentimes, especially in the holidays, it's easy for this to be pushed back and can kicked down the road, and at least a status update will ensure that we'll be able to respond timely with a new council. I would also hope that new council-elect would be attending those meetings as well, so they can have a good understanding by that point as well.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
President, I have no objection to that. I move we continue the public hearing on H. 2017-0113 to February 6.
2018.
2018.
Second with a question.
Got a motion second, continue to February 6, 2018, and is there any discussion?
Mr. President, just...
Mr. Cavanagh.
The maker of the motion also contemplate the status update at the last meeting of the year.
Certainly, I don't know if...
Or the workshop, either workshop, December workshop is fine.
Yeah, I don't know if we can compel through a motion that the mayor sticks that on the agenda, but I would hope that certainly that would happen.
We can see that happens. Any other, okay, any other discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Mr. President, just to continue on that, particularly as we get even into the update at the end of the year, but even when we get to February, I still don't know what the expectations are. How do I notice? You said everybody affected there, are we sending letters? Again, the notice is done, what's the expectation from council in the coming months? Am I to write letters to everybody, noticing this, inviting them to City Hall two, three, four times, like in the 2012 process where we had multiple open houses? Do we propose what we originally proposed as a starting point? Do we start from scratch? I'm not quite sure what we're doing here. So some direction certainly helps going forward. I got February, but I don't know what I'm doing in between necessarily, besides more outreach.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
Mr. President, Caleb, my thought would be to work with those that were interested today, to identify people that they, people in organizations that they believe would be affected and interested in participating in the conversations in the meantime. would be affected and interested in participating in the conversations in the meantime, so that when it comes back on February 6, we'll have made sure that, that anyone, any of us can think would have a, a serious enough interest in it to, to provide comment, to either come or provide comment beforehand, and then that, that way it will be, I feel like, we'll be in a lot better position to actually make a decision.
Mr. President. I'd, I'd perhaps take it one step further, and Caleb, you asked, I would be supportive of a letter going out to any of the property owners that are affected in that area.
So again, just further clarification on that, then, is that everybody that's within the quarter-mile area in North and South Rims? I mean, that's thousands of letters, and, and don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't mind doing that if you want to do. There's going to create confusion, I think. Or is it properties that are in low-density within those areas, or where, where's that line drawn? I just, I just need to know what...
Mr. President, I, I think for clarification, the, the low-density, for me, is where I would be supportive of. Again, I don't want to speak for the council, but that would be the direction I would provide.
Any other?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Little.
I agree. I think that would make the most sense, Caleb.
And then again, just so I could kind of send a letter to everybody with help, they help identify other interested parties that may be there. I'll hold something here at City Hall. Am I essentially presenting what was presented to you and getting that feedback, or are we starting from square one, or what? Is there some generally direction on, yeah, the rim is something, or do we start from, should the rim be something?
Mr. President.
Mr. Morton.
For, for suggestion, I think it's fair to present that, that a lot of work has been done to try and address some assets in the community that, that are on the front of our attention. No decisions have been made. This is language that tries to capture some of those desires, to address those particular assets. Before this comes back to council, we want to get your input and thoughts, or if you've got questions or concerns about general intent of what the city's trying to, trying to address. And, and at the December workshop, if that large meeting doesn't, hasn't occurred, at the very least, hopefully Warren's had a chance to at least do some preliminary analysis on his concerns from a public works perspective, and the BCA's had an opportunity, or you've met with them, and perhaps Dave's had some outreach to, to the organization prior to December 8, and, and the Southern Rim Coalition's kept in the loop as well, and is active participant. Helpful?
Yeah, again, any, any, I just don't want to come back in February and say, no, you missed the mark. I need to know what, what's expected here for December and February, and if it's, you want me to have three in-person meetings with people that are low-density and anyone else identified, I'll do it. If, if, I, I, yeah, I'm just, and we don't have to design the whole program, you know what I'm saying, but just, already, this helps, so...
Caleb, I think, I think that between the building contractors, the South Rim and the North Rim, it's up to them now to make sure that they get informed and stuff, and I'm sure they will. The developers that's got ground out there, I'm sure they're going to be, want to be informed, and the residents will get their information through the, the South Rim. You know, which is, which is a very, those people, basically two ladies have done a heck of a job getting that out there and getting that taken care of. So we will see, CJ, that we get it on the workshop for an update for February, and we invite everybody back. And with that, we'll move on to future meeting topics. Anybody got anything other than December workshop? Mr. Burton.
Mr. President, if the December 8 workshop will be the one where we get an update on at least the first level of progress with, with public works and the BCA, it might be a time to give us an update on the calendar of the broad-brush comp plan amendment schedule, the 18-monther, kind of do both of those at the same time.
Any other? If not council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Burton, one, one last thing, if you don't mind. You folks were handed a book by Commissioner Jones from the HPC. This is a combined walking tour book now. If, if you recall, in the past, there were two, one for the North, one for the South. So between the work of the commission and Hillary in the clerk's office, they've been able to combine that into one, and President Johnson forgot to mention that when he handed those out tonight, that now we have it all in one, one resource for the kids and for the public to use, and are available through the clerk's office, and out there on the sign, there's actually a box that they try to keep stocked. So anyways, just wanted to let you know why they handed it out to you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody want to adjourn?
Mr. President.
We're going to stay, we're going to go up and go on the couch and go to sleep.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See you, guys.